To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins. Interpreters are available for assistance with in-person public comment. Please connect with them if you are in need of services. Hay servicios de interpretación disponibles para asistir con los comentarios públicos en persona. Por favor, habla con un intérprete si necesita estos servicios. Yet et derrum megnabannut suneganum tharkmanichi gari kunek miyatzek tharkmanchi het oknutian hamar.
All right. Good evening and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council with the Parking Authority and Police Commission on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. I would like to take a moment to recognize that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as you can see, the entire council is wearing shades of pink. Tonight, we are supporting the cause. Breast cancer awareness is vital in the fight against a disease that affects millions of us worldwide. And by raising awareness, promoting early detection, and funding research, we can help save lives and improve outcomes for those diagnosed, whether through education, participation in events, donations, or simply wearing pink. Every action contributes to a stronger, more informed community committed to ending breast cancer, and together, we can make a difference. On a personal note, I will add that although it's wonderful that we all wear pink and raise that awareness every month, please, please, if you are somebody who could be at risk of breast cancer or you know somebody, make sure to have them get their screenings. That is the only thing that truly saves life: early detection. So please encourage that and encourage more funding for early detection of breast cancer. All right. Please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with the positive and collective support for our beloved community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each one of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
Terrific. How are you, Madam Mayor?
Great. Happy to be indoors and staying dry.
Absolutely.
Can you please call the roll?
For sure. Councilmember Anthony?
Here.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Razadi?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Here.
And Mayor Perez?
I'm also here.
Thank you.
All right. There will be four periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and must submit cards or call before the comment period begins. You can submit cards to our lovely city clerk right over here. And the first public comment period is for general comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you're here in person and wish to speak during general comment, you should have submitted the yellow public comment card to our city clerk. If you'd like to participate over the phones, you can call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in the queue until the general comment period begins, at which time no additional callers will be taken. If you would like to participate in public comment for the hearing, public hearing, over the phone, please call anytime between now and the beginning of the public hearing at Callers will be placed in a queue until the public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional public comment periods are available following each of the reports to council this evening. Interpreters are also available here in the front row for folks who need assistance in Spanish or Armenian. And if anybody needs this interpretation service, please go and see them now. If they have not heard anything by the beginning of the general public comment, I will send them home. We have seven announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for October 14th, 2025. Get ready, Burbank. It's time for another Parks and Recreation Department's Galaxy Night. Join us on Saturday, October 18th, at 6:00 p.m. for a day of fun, friends, and soccer action. Grab your tickets now at burbankparks.com. The last day to register to vote for the November 4th special election is Monday, October 20th. Voter registration cards are available in the Burbank City Clerk's office, at Burbank Libraries, or you may register online at lavote.gov. If your name has changed or if you have moved, you will need to re-register by the deadline. There are four 24-hour vote-by-mail drop boxes in Burbank at the following locations: Burbank City Hall, Buena Vista Library, Jocelyn Adult Center, and Ralph Foye Park. 11-day vote centers will be open at the following location beginning October 25th: Robert Grass Park and Magnolia Park United Methodist Church. Questions regarding voter registration and the issuance of ballots can be addressed by contacting the county at 800-815-2666 or by visiting lavote.gov for more information. You can also contact the Burbank City Clerk's office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank City Clerk's office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2027. The deadline to submit an application is Monday, October 20th, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. The Burbank City Clerk's office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Art and Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2028. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, October 23rd, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. The Burbank City Clerk's office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2027. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, October 23rd, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. As a reminder, any person appointed to fill the vacancy shall hold office for the remainder of the unexpired term. Persons appointed to serve unexpired terms must complete the term before applying to serve on another board, commission, or committee. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Drop-off expired, unused, or unwanted medications for safe disposal during National Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 25th. This drive-through event will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the rear parking lot of the Burbank Police Department. Please note that illicit substances, liquids, needles, or sharps are not accepted. For more information, visit burbimpd.org. Please join the City of Burbank and the Housing Rights Center for a free housing rights clinic on Monday, October 27, 2025, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Community Service Building. City staff and Housing Rights Center representatives will be available to answer questions about fair housing, rent increases, evictions, and more. No appointment is needed. Services are offered on a first-come, first-served basis. For more information, contact the Burbank Housing Department at 818-238-5180 or visit the city's website at burbankca.gov/HEU. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation is a presentation of a proclamation declaring October 1st through 31st, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Burbank. I welcome Christine Ramos from Family Service Agency and any of our Zonta members who may be in the audience or any folks on our Domestic Violence Task Force to join me on the podium. I also want to welcome our two councilmembers, Councilmember Mullins and Councilmember Anthony, who sit on the Domestic Violence Task Force, to join us. Now, Burbank is very fortunate to have several community groups advocating for this cause, and these partnerships are vital in our fight against domestic violence. And Chris, if you'd like to say a few words, I'd be happy to have you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, city staff, and community. We are very grateful for the acknowledgement tonight of October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, making sure that our community is aware of resources and the work that takes place each and every day on their behalf, I think is very important. If you're in need of services, please go ahead and call our agency, that's Family Service Agency of Burbank, and we are there to help every day, 24 hours a day, and we are there.
Thank you. And now I have a lovely proclamation for you. And as you can see, most of our council, and I know Councilwoman Razadi is very involved too in all of these actions.
Can I come on?
Come on down.
You're wearing pink. Yes.
Yeah, we're all in support. You're wearing your pin. We're all here for the cause. All right. So whereas domestic violence occurs across society regardless of age, gender, race, sexuality, wealth, and geography, and whereas domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury to American women from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and affects other family members as well, and whereas nearly 3 in 10 women and 1 in 10 men in the U.S. have experienced rape, physical violence, and are stalking by a partner, and reported it having a related impact on their functioning, and whereas many outstanding groups in our community, such as Family Service Agency of Burbank, work towards ending domestic violence and assuring safety and security for our families, now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Burbank. And I encourage all our citizens to learn more about this issue and support programs that offer services to victims of domestic violence. Thank you to FSA for all you do and for all of our organizations, partners, friends who are working on the issue of domestic violence. Our next presentation this evening is the presentation of a proclamation declaring October 19th through 25th, 2025, as United Against Hate Week in the city of Burbank. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Suzanne Wertz, Vice President of the Burbank Human Relations Council, to join me at the podium. And also, and also not to brag, recent recipient of the Imagine a City recognition from FSA. Thank you for all your community service. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. And would you like to share a few words before I read the proclamation?
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, City Council, Mayor, and staff, as well as community members. The Burbank Human Relations Council would like to invite everyone to join us for our United Against Hate Rally, which is going to be held at Lincoln Park on Saturday, the 18th, from 4:30 to 6:30 in partnership with the Good Trouble Rally folks. They have been recognizing the leadership for civil rights with, in honor of John Lewis for many months now, and so we are joining them from 4:30 to 6:30 this Saturday, the 18th. And we invite the whole community to come out for that. And at this time, I would also like to invite up Dr. Oscar Macias, Superintendent of the Burbank Unified School District, to talk or to accept the proclamation, because we have a partnership. Burbank Human Relations Council has a partnership with the school district, and we have United Against Hate together with the students and the families in Burbank, and we're so grateful to Dr. Macias.
And just a brief statement or two. Thank you. We have a deep appreciation of our partnership, deeply support the campaign. It's not just a week for us, it's every single day. Anytime a child, a student of ours, is made to feel uncomfortable, regardless of what it is, it's not okay with us, and we're trying to instill on a daily basis from our teachers, support staff, administrators, district management, our Board of Education as well, that we will not condone that. So we are proud partners, and we appreciate every effort. You will see that on our campuses, banners, posters in classrooms. So again, thank you to the Burbank Human Relations Council and the city for all their efforts, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Macias. We appreciate you. All right. Here's the proclamation. Whereas the city of Burbank stands for diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all irrespective of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or any characteristic, and whereas we reject hate, discrimination, and violence, aiming for a prejudice-free community, and whereas, united, we strengthen and celebrate our city's rich tapestry of cultures and perspectives, and whereas by joining with our fellow California cities, we send a resounding message that we are united in our resolve to combat hate and promote acceptance and inclusivity, and whereas the city of Burbank, in partnership with the Burbank Human Relations Council, is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our community and collectively promotes acceptance, respect, tolerance, and unity, enabling residents and visitors to live, work, and thrive without fear. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim October 19th through 25th, 2025, as United Against Hate Week, as an important step in bridging divisions and strengthening our community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's all no hate until who keeps the proclamation. All right. And I said two presentations earlier. I meant three. Sorry. I'm still in baby brain, y'all. I'm a new mom, 10 weeks. All right. Our final presentation is a certificate of recognition to the winners of the City of Burbank's Clerk's Cup. I want to welcome our Burbank City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, to let us know who won, but more importantly, all about the Clerk's Cup.
Absolutely. That's the most important part. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, it's once again time to announce the winner of the annual Clerk's Cup Student Voter Registration Contest, which is easily the third most exciting awards presentation after the Grammys and the Oscars. The Clerk's Cup was started in 2015, so this is our 10-year anniversary. Okay? The Clerk's Cup was the idea of my predecessor, former city clerk and current councilmember, Zazette Mullins, and former Burbank Board of Education Board Member, Steve Ferguson, when he was clerk of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome Burbank Board of Education President Armand Daca-Kanin and interim Superintendent Oscar Macias to join me. The Clerk's Cup was designed to foster a healthy competition between our city's two comprehensive high schools, Burbank High School and John Burroughs High School, to see which school's student body can preregister the most students so that when they turn 18, they are already ready to vote and participate in our country's democratic process. According to the Center for Information and Research on Civic Learning and Engagement, youth who reported having been either encouraged to vote or taught how to register to vote in high school are more likely to vote and participate in other civic activities, more knowledgeable about voting processes, and more invested in and attentive to elections than other youth. And this is an interesting statistic. A 2022 analysis found that counties with preregistration had a 9-point higher youth voter turnout rate in 2020, and that's pretty significant. At this time, I would like to invite up Chris Pepe's of Burbank High School and Dawn Snowden-Frost of John Burroughs High School, who both teach social studies and helped oversee this year's We have certificates for both of you to thank you for helping us with this. This is for you, and this is for you, Dawn. Okay. Now, drumroll, please. Okay. There are no winners and no losers, but this year, the trophy will return to, says "Announce winner." See, it's all embargoed, it's all top secret until this very minute. To John Burroughs High School. Now, here's for the really exciting part. Between the two schools, 160 students were preregistered to vote. That is simply an outstanding result. Last year, we had 120 registrations, which was an amazing result, and this year, the students significantly topped those numbers. Let's have another round of applause for our students and teachers. Everyone involved should be very proud of their hard work to make this year's contest such a success. The future of this country belongs to our young people, so it's encouraging to see our local students registering to vote, engaging in the democratic process, and making their voices heard. Thank you all again.
I was gonna hand it to the mayor.
You can, you can. Okay. Join next to the mayor.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Since we have our Assembly member here, 10-year anniversary resolution time, right, for both districts? And thank you.
Man, put him on the spot.
I think the teachers would like to sit.
Yes. Now, we'd love to hear from our two stars here. You are really the stars of the show. Thank you for creating the next generation of civic leaders.
It's just like a glittering prize.
Thank you for what you're doing. You're really creating our next generation of civic leaders, and I'm so proud to be a product of BUSD and have teachers like all of you. So thank you for what you do, and please share some words of wisdom with us.
Words of wisdom. Well, you know, first of all, we don't do it alone. We do it with our staff, and we do it with our students, and I have to thank all my teachers at our school, because they really gave time up from their classes to encourage students to register, to teach them how to register, to give the forms back when there were mistakes on them and fix them. You know, the students are so excited. The special election coming up has a lot of the kids in the buzz with just the fact that there's elections going on. And, you know, we really all believe in the voting process and the civic engagement, and part of being a history teacher and a social studies teacher is getting kids passionate about something they're doing in their community. So thank you for creating this. Thank you, City Council and community, for supporting all of us, and, you know, for all the teachers and staff that are a big part of getting the kids out there and part of the community. Well, thank you.
Superintendent?
This is an amazing example of the collaboration of our teachers and our school sites, but really importantly, we're teaching, they're teaching our kids about civic engagement, and specifically, really proud, Burbank civic engagement and community responsibility, which is what we want our future students, our graduating students, to have in addition to their academics. So deeply appreciate the partnership in having this set up in the city and for our teaching staff at both our high schools. So thank you very much, and thank you.
I personally want to thank the mayor and Adam Schultz for coming by, or Nick Schultz, Nick Schultz, for coming by to our classroom. They visited, they visited my classroom and met with some of my students, so I just want to recognize both of you for that, and I'd like to see the rest of the city council and school board come to our classrooms and engage with our students. So much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you to our two wonderful teachers and our school board partners. And that is our next presentation. Thank you, everybody. We're so excited to have more folks enroll to vote, register to vote. I know I did it when I was 17 and a half, because my birthday is November 4th, Election Day. So thank you to them. They are wonderful, and we are so glad to have them. Let's give them one more round of applause. That is all the presentations today. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we're gonna have our 2028 Summer Olympic Report presentation soon, so I'm gonna defer my city manager report to that, so I do not have anything right now.
Madam Mayor, can I please have the council for a quick photo in all of your pink? Yes. Why don't you scoot together?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Go Burroughs.
I'm with you.
All right. Now we are on to our presentations for this evening. Our first presentation is a legislative update from Assembly Member Nick Schultz, who represents the city of Burbank in the 44th Assembly District. Welcome, Assembly Member Schultz.
Thank you, everyone.
I should say, welcome back.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Adam Schultz, and I'd like to begin by talking, I'd like to begin by reviewing the Four Freedoms and the mural behind you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
And thank you, Assembly Member Schultz, for that presentation.
Yes, that's good cue, Madam Mayor. No, in all seriousness, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to present. I have a brief 25-minute, more like maybe 10-minute presentation about what we've been working on, on your behalf in the state capitol, and I look forward to addressing your questions. I will note that Amanda Fassal, our field representative, who represents Burbank when I'm not here, is handing some handouts to our city clerk, so you all have them. I'll just make one note, I know this will probably make its way on the public portal, you'll see that make its way on the public portal, you'll see that some of the bills are notated to be two-year bills, meaning that those are bills that are still alive, and will continue to work on those next year, those were bills that we voluntarily held back because we were trying to work through various concerns from the Newsom Administration, but with that, I believe we have the slideshow ready to go, fantastic, and now I can try my hand at this and see if I screw it up too bad, so, I want to just say out the gate, it's an honor and privilege to represent all of you, and we've been hard at work on your behalf over the last 10, going on 11 months, I'm, we're not gonna talk about every bill that we worked on, and that is in the packet in front of you, but we did send 10 bills to the desk of Governor Gavin Newsom this year, and we're really proud to say that these were bills that prioritized protecting our natural resources, focusing on affordability, and of course, building safer communities, so I will briefly go over each of the bills that we sent to the governor, and I'll note whether it was signed or vetoed. The first bill that I introduced on my very first day in office was Assembly Bill 43, this is dubbed the Scenic and Wild Rivers Act, this is codified in Public Resource Code Section 5093.71, I'll just note that my predecessor, now Congresswoman Laura Friedman, had authored AB 2975 several years ago, but it had a sunset that expired at the end of this year. What's important to know is there are 819 miles of federally protected wild and scenic rivers in the state of California that enjoy no equivalent state-level protection, what this bill does is it makes AB 2975 indefinite, and allows the Natural Resources Secretary to put in place immediate protections in the event that the Trump Administration or the United States Congress lifts protections on these riverlands. Last thing I will note is that this isn't just a theoretical concern, at least three times since 2010, the Congress has attempted to lift protection on these lands, this protects some of our most cherished natural resources, and proud to say that that was signed by Governor Newsom. The next bill, I'll be brief, unfortunately, this was one of our two bills that were vetoed this year, we did have an 80% success rate, this is a bill that, taken together with two other bills, were dubbed the Virtual Power Plant Bills, they were all about better forecasting and better planning for our utility companies, and some estimates show that had these bills been signed into law, they could have saved consumers up to $550 million per year. Unfortunately, the Newsom Administration felt that while well-intentioned, these bills could create more uncertainty in the regulatory process of the California Energy Commission, so they were vetoed, but we look forward to working with the Newsom Administration and our colleagues to see if we can bring back a refined version of AB 44 next year. The other bill to enjoy a veto, also in the environmental space, was Assembly Bill 734, this would have, this was, even though it's an environmental bill, it's really about making more data and information available to the public, this is a bill that would have provided the public with necessary biological resource data, so that they could participate effectively and advocate before the PUC and the California Energy Commission, Newsom Administration felt that some of that data should not be made publicly available, it could compromise certain assets in California, so regrettably, we were not able to get a signature on that one, but from here on out, it's all good news. Probably one of our biggest lifts environmentally was Assembly Bill 1319, which protects California endangered species, I will note that in the state of California, there are 80 fish and wildlife species, and 65 plant species that currently enjoy only protection under the Federal Endangered Species Act with no equivalent state-level protection, in at least two documented instances, the Trump Administration has been rolling back protections on these species, this bill doesn't automatically provide protection to any of these species, but what it does do is create an expedited process at the Department of Fish and Wildlife, so that if federal protections are limited, are rolled back in any way, we can at least act quickly in evaluating whether or not we'd like to put in place state-level protections. The next three bills I'll be talking about all focus on the issue of public safety, these are all bills in which we were the primary author, I'd like to mention that Assembly Bill 379 has a local tie, and I'll get to that in just a moment, but this is probably the most significant reform and improvement on the state's efforts to combat human trafficking in almost 15 years, the bill does three, but really four separate things, the first thing that it does is, prior to its signature into law, there was a loophole in the law where, and we're talking about Commercial Sex Act, so you're approaching someone, in this case, a minor, for a sexual activity, if the person solicited was 16 or 17 years old, under this portion of the penal code, you could only file a misdemeanor, now, I won't get into the fact that there are other portions of the penal code that are straight felonies that could be charged, but nonetheless, this was a loophole in the law, 379 now allows a prosecutor to charge a felony in all instances, it's what we term a wobbler, so it can be charged as a felony or misdemeanor, depending on facts and circumstances, including the appropriate age between the two, so if you have an 18-year-old soliciting a 17-year-old, there's more flexibility baked in. Now, here's the local tie, and very important, many of you are Zonchians, you all know that Gloria Solis has been talking for years about the need for businesses to play a stronger role in combating human trafficking, about 15 years ago, the legislature did create a series of laws that required certain kinds of establishments, so think massage parlors, hotels, establishments of that nature, to post a standardized human trafficking notice, and for the public, you might see this when you go out, it's a notice that says, if you or someone you know or believe to be a survivor or a victim of human trafficking, call this number or text this number for help. Well, the legislature 15 years ago never answered two critical questions, who's responsible for actually enforcing that requirement, and then what do you do with any fines or fees that are collected from noncompliant businesses, and just being very blunt with you, there are businesses that are very intentionally looking the other way all across California and feeding into this dark industry. This bill imposes that requirement to police it, not on a local agency, but on the California Department of Justice, so this will be state-administered cost, and more importantly, any fines or fees that are collected, minus essential administrative costs, will all go to a survivor support fund, so that people that are exiting a human trafficking situation can get connected to the housing and job placement resources that they need to rebuild their life. The last thing I will note, of particular interest perhaps to the Burbank Police Department, is that it rolls back a prior bill from State Senator Scott Wiener, and it reinstates the offense of misdemeanor loitering with intent to commit a Commercial Sex Act, it's targeted exclusively on those soliciting the act, but the reason this is important is that no longer do BPD have to wait for actual contact between the John and the victim to happen, if they see somebody loitering with clear and unambiguous intent, they can intervene earlier. I will just make one last programming note on this bill, because I know I've been talking about it a while, if you're in the room, or you're watching live tonight, and you want to learn more, tomorrow morning at Pomona City Hall, I and Speaker Robert Rivas will be conducting a Public Safety Committee hearing here in Los Angeles, in one of the hotbeds of human trafficking, we'll be talking exclusively about AB 379, what it does, and what more we need to do on top of that, that will be livestream on all of our social media channels, in case you're interested in following along. Next two bills will go a little bit quicker, I promise, we also have Assembly Bill 1036, this expands and modernizes post-conviction discovery in the state of California, and I just wanted to very briefly mention the impetus for this case, this results in the wrongful conviction of Obie Anthony, an exonerated person in the state of California who spent 17 years wrongfully incarcerated for a murder that he did not commit. Post-conviction discovery allowed his attorneys to learn that the prosecution's key witness had received favorable treatment in exchange for their testimony, and perhaps more troublingly, witnesses who would have contradicted that witness's testimony, which was later determined to be false testimony, were never called to testify and never disclosed to the defense. AB 1036 is about ensuring that we have confidence in the convictions secured by our prosecutors across the state of California. And lastly, Assembly Bill 321 similarly eliminates a loophole in the law, as I mentioned, there are crimes that can be charged as wobblers, misdemeanor or felony, up until this bill was signed by Governor Newsom, or I should say, actually, until January 1st, when it takes effect, there's a blackout period of the law, so when a defendant has been held to answer at a preliminary hearing, the court cannot review the prosecutor's filing decision until the completion of trial. We have numerous documented instances across the state of California where folks have gone all the way through trial, only to have it reduced at the end of trial to a misdemeanor, leading to clogging and congestion of the courts and great cost, this bill does not downgrade any offenses, but it allows the court to review at any stage of the proceeding until the start of trial, whether the prosecutor appropriately charged the case. One critical amendment we added is that if the courts made a determination, it cannot be re-reviewed by another judge unless there is new evidence that has come to light. The last couple bills I want to mention, we loosely tall, we will loosely refer to as investing in our infrastructure, and there's some very, really critical local wins I'd like to comment on, first of all, one bill that is not on the screen, but is worth noting, is Assembly Bill 306, this is a six-year moratorium on the residential building code, it was such a good idea that Governor Newsom took our bill and put it in the budget and passed it anyway, so, while we weren't able to pass our bill, it was nonetheless a critical win for California, the real goal of that bill is to hold the cost of construction steady for the next six years, the building code is updated roughly every 18 months in some fashion, that means new materials, new techniques that are required, and the industry is constantly trying to keep pace with those changes, this is about holding steady the cost of creating more housing. But I wanted to mention AB 1050, which is on your screen, because this bill was inspired right here in my head, and came from my time on council, but most importantly, it speaks to what I believe to be the right balance in steering the production of more housing in our communities. AB 1050, and I'm sure Councilman Rosati could probably talk even at greater length than I could about this, there are conditions, covenants, and restrictions on several parcels of land in our community, and I have often looked at the old IKEA, the old Kmart, as just some examples of these vacant and underutilized commercial properties, which would be perfect for more infill housing in our community. Unfortunately, many of these parcels have CCNRs that prevent the development of housing, there was an effort back in 2017 to lift CCNRs, and that was successful, but only in the event of a 100% affordable housing project, and as much as I love 100% affordable housing projects, we're not building those nearly enough, this now lifts CCNRs on all commercial properties for all kinds of housing development, whether it's 1% or 100% affordable housing, we need more housing, and with all due respect, an ADU here or there is not going to solve the housing crisis, we need it on a larger scale, and these opportunity sites are perfect in our community for the development of more housing. Only two more, I promise. AB 1150 was actually at the request of the Hollywood Burbank Airport, what it does is it increases the maximum fee that can be charged on an out-of-area person renting a car from $9 to $12, that might seem like a relatively minor bill, I'll note that the $9 maximum hadn't been adjusted in nearly 20 years, and our airport asked for this bill so that they can upgrade and modernize their car rental facilities to complement the replacement passenger terminal, which will be opening next year. And I will mention, of all the bills I'm talking about, I believe seven or eight, Diane or Amanda, can correct me if I'm wrong, seven or eight passed on a bipartisan basis, so very, very pleased with that result. The last bill I'll highlight is Assembly Bill 361, this is the Best Value Procurement for School Districts Act, here's the relevance to Burbank, for about 10 to 15 years, Los Angeles Unified School District has been able to consider other factors, including prior work history, reputation in the community, when deciding which vendor to select to complete certain capital projects, as all of you know, generally speaking, public agencies are required to select the lowest responsive bidder, and yet, we see plenty of bad actors in the market who lowball the bid, and then never deliver on time, and costs explode exponentially. This bill does two things, it creates the pilot program that LAUSD was operating under, makes it permanent, and then it actually expands this as an option, so that if Burbank Unified, for example, wanted to not have to go with the lowest responsive bidder, but maybe someone they've worked before, worked with before, that they can trust, if it's a project over $1 million, they can now do it, I will just note that there's nothing mandatory about that, they can still operate under the current lowest responsive bidder model, but this at least gives them another choice. Last thing I'll just touch on are our budget wins for the state of California, I wanted to mention, as you all know, that we have expanded the film and television tax credit from $330 million to $750 million, and one of the bills that we were able to co-author in our office was Assembly Bill 1138, which expands the kind, which increases the kinds of productions that can participate in our tax credit program, including animation, which is a huge employer in our district. Some of you might also remember voting on Proposition 4 last November, this was the climate bond, this is a big one, we are receiving one of the earliest and largest appropriations under Proposition 4 since its inception, we're bringing $5 million back to the Discovery Cube, Los Angeles and the Silmar area, for a fire prevention training ground, and outdoor sustainability and wildfire prevention pavilion, it'll have a dual role to both educate homeowners and community members about how to harden your infrastructure and build more fire resilient homes, it'll also be a training ground for the next generation of wildfire fighters and prevention experts, and again, in a year where it feels like we're cutting and losing funding left and right, it was really wonderful to deliver this back to the district. Very locally, we have a Los Angeles County Delegation Grant Fund Program, and this year, I selected the Homenetmen Burbank Sappon Chapter to receive a modest, but still good grant program, as Councilmember Anthony knows, they provide critical youth support and development services for Burbank, Glendale, and La Cressena and beyond. I also wanted to mention this year, our Nonprofit of the Year was the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, and we brought them up to the Capitol for a wonderful day to be honored, to meet with other amazing nonprofits, and I'll just note that we take community nominations, so in the beginning part of next year, if any of you or anyone watching has a nonprofit that you would like to nominate, please reach out to Amanda or Diane with my office, we'd be happy to take that nomination, and we try to honor all the incredible work that our nonprofits are doing. We also select a Woman of the Year every year, and this year, we acknowledged Lindsay Imber, who is the President of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and she was recognized as our Woman of the Year in the state capitol. Last thing I wanted to mention, and then Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, is just the best way to contact us, we have our district office at 300 East Magnolia, right across from the Burbank YMCA, 5th floor, room 504, you can come visit us anytime, I'll throw in my number there, too, of course, you can contact our state capitol office, but the last thing I wanted to mention is that a lot of people call our office or email our office, I encourage you to do both, but this is the one life hack that I hope more people take advantage of, and some of you have heard me mention this before, if you go through our website, which is listed there, and you hit Contact, you can actually input your name and the bill that you're writing about, whether you support it or oppose it, that gets uploaded to my iPad much faster than the manual work of Amanda taking your call and then having to log it in, and that can be very important when you're dealing with time-sensitive votes, and the reason I bring all that up is because when I'm sitting on the floor casting a vote, I can actually see your name, I can see the name of every constituent who's written in favor or in opposition to a bill, so my suggestion would be, if it's a time-sensitive issue, use the website, and then nothing precludes you from later calling in or emailing anyway, but if you want to get your opinion registered with me as quickly as possible, the website's the best way to do it. So with that, Madam Mayor, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to address you, I'm gonna hopefully exit out of this correctly, okay, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Assembly Member, look at you, it was less than, less than 25 minutes.
Well, we try, you know, a little bit less, closer to, you know, 20.
Thank you, though, for sharing with us all that you're doing up in Sacramento to represent us, do my colleagues have any brief questions? Councilmember Anthony.
Did you say grief questions, because I have some grief.
I said brief, I will play the Oscars music.
Just real quick, your suits have gotten nicer, so I appreciate that, AB 379, this was a controversial bill, there were a couple of Assembly Members playing politics with it, I want to commend you on taking ownership of this bill, and passing it through just letter to the law, that was incredible, I don't really have a question about it, but I think what you've done with that, it shows your leadership, you are Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and I think this, what happened with that bill, and how you got it over the finish line, that is a commendation to the work that you've been doing this last year, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony, Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you, I don't have a question, I do have, first of all, thank you for everything you do, I appreciate all these bills, and going through them, and coming here tonight to present, I do have one request for all of us, that, including yourself, that sat here on the dais and dealt with local control issues, I do appreciate that, when voting on a bill, when something coming before you that you see could help us in Burbank to give us local control, that you remember your former colleagues, and say, yes, I've been there, I understand what they're going through, and support us on giving us that local control as much as you can, within the boundaries of what you can and can't do, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate it.
And we're still colleagues, we know where to find them.
Right, different levels of government, all serving the people.
He has a bigger office now, so he doesn't have to be.
We just have different roles, you're just as important.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rosati.
I just had the question about the cube, I was actually there for the weekend, is that the Kid Zone Cube you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it has the, it's like the indoor exploration space for kids, they can learn about climate and environment, that's the site that I'm talking about, I will mention there's two locations, so we're not talking about the Orange County location, we're talking about the LA location, yep.
And there'll be a place for fire prevention, and...
Yes. Yes. So they actually have, I'll just be very brief, Madam Mayor, they have a fairly broad expansion plan that has different segments. This is just one component of this, but they're hoping to get it online in the next few years. We will be having a check presentation ceremony in the near future, and our office will be happy to apprise all of you about those details once we confirm them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Vice Mayor Takashi.
Thank you so much, Assembly Member, for this update and the details that you provided us and all the work that you do in getting so many local, specifically local, things passed for us. Quick question. So now that this is done, this process is done, moving forward, if someone has an idea for the next round of legislation, do you have a way for them to contact you and give that information?
It's almost as if we'd planned that. We really didn't, but I appreciate it, Vice Mayor. Yes, we take bill ideas from community members. We actually have a worksheet or a form that we can provide. You don't have to fill all of it out, but it asks you, like, what is the problem you're trying to solve? Do you have thoughts on a potential solution? Do you have a section of the code that you're referring to? Best way is if you're in Burbank and you're watching this, just reach out to Amanda Faisal. We take any and all ideas, and I will just briefly say, in terms of process, between now and the end of the year is probably the best time to submit your bill ideas, because our bill introduction deadline is the end of February. So while we'll certainly take ideas in January and February, we start to internally review all of the proposals that come from within the House, from the community. The earlier that you can get it to us, the sooner we can put eyes on it and have somebody work it up and really give it a careful consideration. So that applies to the council as a whole, all of you individually, and even just regular community members. If you have a bill idea, please let us know right away.
Any other questions, comments? No? All right. Thank you, Assembly Member Schultz. We'll see you back around Burbank soon, I'm sure.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Good luck tonight.
All right. Oh, City Manager Hess.
Madam Mayor, can we take a very brief two-minute video, two-minute break? We have a bunch of videos that, for tonight's public comment, and we just want to sort them out. We're having, we just want to make sure that they're good to go as far as that. So two minutes, and we'll come back with the Olympics.
Sure, we're going to take a two-minute recess. Stay tuned, the Olympics are next. All right. Welcome back to the 2028 Olympics. Our next presentation is an update on the city's presentation for the 2028 Summer Olympics, and I now welcome Parks and Recreation Director Marissa Garcia and Community Development Director Patrick Prescott to provide an update.
Good evening, Mayor Perez and Councilmembers. I am Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. I, along with Community Development Director Patrick Prescott, will be providing a brief update on the city's ongoing preparations for the 2026 FIFA World Cup and the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games. City staff have been meeting. City staff have been continuing our internal planning efforts through an interdepartmental planning committee that includes representatives from various departments, including the City Manager's Office, Community Development, Parks and Recreation, Library Services, Police, Fire, Public Works, Burbank Water and Power, and the City Attorney's Office. Everyone is working together to make sure Burbank is ready to take advantage of these global events. To begin, the city has submitted a proposal to the Los Angeles World Cup Host Committee to host an official FIFA World Cup 2026 Fan Zone right here in downtown Burbank. This event could bring, at minimum, 5,000 spectators to Burbank. We expect to hear whether we have been selected in November, and if so, we will move forward with an agreement by January. We're also in talks with several organizations to bring youth soccer events and youth soccer camps to Burbank, including potential partnerships with international soccer clubs like the Rayados de Monterrey from Mexico and Real Madrid from Spain. On the Olympic side, we've also been working directly with the United Kingdom Consulate General, who have expressed interest in partnering with the city of Burbank to host Paralympic events this coming year. And looking ahead, we're planning community viewing events for both the World Cup and the Olympics and Paralympics, opportunities for our residents to come together and celebrate these global events locally. The Parks and Recreation team continues to expand our adaptive sports programs to support athletes of all abilities. We have offered the LA 26 organizers the use of our facilities for Paralympic athletes and practice sessions. This is part of our ongoing commitment to inclusivity and accessibility. In that same spirit, we're planning to align the 2028 Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo, or BASE, with the Paralympic Games to tie local activities into the international celebration of sport. We have also started outreach to potential international delegations that might be hosted here in Burbank. Letters have gone out to our sister cities, and we're working with the International School of Los Angeles, Lila, to build additional connections. The goal is to have our visiting delegations stay in Burbank and use our park and recreation and school district facilities for training and community activities. I will now turn it over to Patrick, who will continue with the update.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, and welcome, Mr. Prescott.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. On the regional front, staff continues to participate in coordination meetings through the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments alongside cities like Glendale, Pasadena, San Fernando, Los Angeles. At the most recent meeting in September, we focused on identifying potential festival sites for potential Olympic-related gatherings. We created a shared information hub for regional events and promoting local training facilities while encouraging community involvement across the San Fernando Valley. On the transportation and mobility front, transportation is another major area of focus, of course. Metro and the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, are planning regional mobility hubs throughout Los Angeles County, and we're working with them to figure out how Burbank fits into that system, given our extensive bus and rail network. The idea is to make sure we can handle the increase in visitors during the Games, while also maybe leaving behind some permanent improvements that benefit our residents and visitors in the long run. With regard to tourism and hospitality and promotion of Burbank, the Hollywood Burbank Airport could possibly be designated as an official LA 28 airport, which would make it a key access point for athletes, staff, and visitors. And Visit Burbank, the Tourism Business Improvement District, which we're hoping to extend for another 10 years, an item on your agenda tonight, second step of that. Visit Burbank is exploring ways to partner with our hotels and venues in the city to host events and accommodate Olympic delegations, and we're looking at ways to showcase Burbank through citywide promotions, including possible airport signage, welcome banners throughout the city, et cetera. So staff will continue to monitor regional efforts, work closely with our partners, and keep council updated as these opportunities move forward. So that concludes our update, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Any brief questions from the council? No? No, just thank you from the council.
You're welcome.
We're really excited about all things Olympics and all things World Cup.
Staff is very excited as well.
Thank you. I think that's the first time I've heard you use intro music. All right. Now we will look at reporting on closed session. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, and for the benefit of the public, the City Council met this afternoon at 4:00 PM to discuss one item of existing litigation in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in the matter of Anush Khemjian versus City of Burbank. It was a trip and fall case. City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for joint general public comment. I'll be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak. In order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat right here at the front. And for the person who is up next to speak at the podium, a timer is available on the podium, and this is also the last call for anyone who needs an interpreter, or I will be releasing these staff members this evening. Have you all received any asks? No? Then you're free to go home. Thank you for being here tonight. Folks may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but you will not be able to speak on this agenda item following this segment. Please state your name for the record and correct me if I mispronounce your name. Madam City Clerk, how many total speakers do we have?
We have 31 total, 19 in person, and 12 on the phone.
Okay, 31 total by our council guidelines. That means each speaker will get two minutes to speak today. Let us begin general public comment. Our first speaker is Ron Bax, followed by Mike Darian. Welcome, Mr. Bax.
Welcome. I think after this point, you should not be able to mispronounce my name.
All right, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and City Staff. The city should halt activities related to rent caps and a proposed rent registry. The following is taken from the City Staff Report, April 25, 2025, detailing housing enforcement unit, claims over eight months. Claims received, three for harassment, retaliation, zero violations were issued. Three for illegal rent increases, zero violations were issued. One for security deposits, zero violations were issued. Twenty-two for non-fault evictions, eight violations, likely due to housing providers being unaware of increased relocation assistance created by Burbank. And I point out also, this is over eight months, it's not on your list, but the first five months, there were eight, and there were eight actions or violations. The next three months, there were 14 more, and the violation stayed at eight. Twenty informal for price gouging, two warnings were issued, 18 deemed baseless. The two may have been a result of being unaware of the state of emergency following the Pacific Palisades and the Altadena fires. Key points, only 10 claims require actions extrapolating to 15 annually, costing $15,000? I don't know what the hourly rate would be. A proposed rent registry would cost $1 to $5 million annually, burdening all housing providers for issues created by 0.0577% of them, with many claims likely frivolous, as I just mentioned or alluded to. Using the Pasadena yearly fee of $238, this would be a $6,188,000 drain on the economy. Rent caps violate the Fifth Amendment, and a rent registry could infringe on the Fourth Amendment rights by demanding personal information without legitimate need. Tenant-related data should be reported with funding by tenants, as program benefits them. The rent registry and caps are fiscally irresponsible and legally questionable. Lord only knows how much money has been spent already.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mike Darian, followed by Nellie Rumi.
Is it going to go in this room? Yeah, okay. Good evening, Councilmembers. Before you consider expanding rent control in Burbank, I ask you to consider this. Stanford, Harvard... Stanford, Harvard, UC Berkeley, Oxford, University of Wisconsin reached the same conclusion. Their studies show it reduces available rentals, worsens housing quality, and often hurts the very people it claims to help, especially low-income renters and younger generations. Here in Burbank, the facts don't show crisis. According to CoStar, rents have risen just 3% a year over the past 10 years. Yes, you heard me right. That's right. Burbank doesn't need to repeat Los Angeles' mistakes. When Cambridge, Massachusetts abolished rent control in 1995, crime fell 16%. Why? Because neglected buildings invite disorders, but reinvestment and pride in ownership strengthen neighborhoods. The best way to make Burbank great is to ensure our public schools and next generation benefit from every decision you make. Every policy should be measured by its impact on our schools, because strong schools build strong communities. So I ask you respectfully, Nikki and Constantine, if you truly believe your conclusions carries more weight than that of Stanford, Harvard, Berkeley, Oxford, and the University of Wisconsin, then please explain to the people of Burbank why they should trust your opinion over leading experts. I'll be sitting there waiting for your response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Nellie Rumi, followed by Rennie Gabriel.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the city council. We, the people, voted against rent control in Burbank. Please allow our vote to count. Providing housing is not a lucrative business for small-time providers known as mom and pop. Many of us are holding mortgages, yes, even senior citizens. In addition, we pay for utilities, insurance, property taxes, maintenance, and repairs, including re-roofing, which is very costly. All of the mentioned expenses have risen tremendously and continue to rise. Many housing providers are in a financially negative position or near breakeven, and making profits is out of the question for some. Add your proposed rent control to the mix, and it is a recipe for disaster, paying fees to the city for existing as a housing provider and whatever other fees the city will incur. What about government agencies that excuse tenants' rents to housing providers during the pandemic? What is in place for the housing providers as another crisis may occur in the future? If renters are excused from paying rent, what will the housing providers be excused from? Paying county taxes? Any other of the many expenses? You cannot protect one group and devastate the other group in this overreach. According to Apartment Owners Association, many housing providers in Los Angeles lost their properties during the pandemic. Please do not take advantage of us. Please do not divide us. Do the right thing.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Rennie Gabriel, followed by Shirley Tom.
Hello, council members. Constantine Anthony and Nikki Perez. As renters, you should morally recuse yourself, just like you required Chris Rosati to do because he owns rental units. You have no business voting on rent control issues that benefit you directly. You have a conflict of interest and lack impartiality. The BTU buses people here. They don't live here, they don't have investments here, they don't pay taxes here, but they're demanding changes to how this city has operated for decades with no problems. Why are you listening to them? This is what I read in your April 25 memo from the city manager's office on the housing enforcement unit. You've probably spent about $1 million setting up this bureaucracy that has helped three tenants. That's about $330,000 per taxpayer money per tenant. The enforcement unit only benefits tenants and ignores housing providers. Our tax dollars would be better spent to help tenants with rent subsidies. Instead of looking to spend millions more of taxpayer money on more bureaucracy, why not use the 3.4 million allocated to finish the front street old piano store building for the homeless solutions center that sits empty? This was proposed in the staff report of April 2024. I want you to promise to honor the will of the voters of Burbank who've said no to rent control, not once but twice. You have taken an oath to defend the Constitution, and that includes property rights. I strongly recommend that you end all conversations on rent control issues and honor the Constitution and your oath.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Shirley Tom, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Please show video.
Good evening, Shirley. I'm a Burbank, longtime Burbank resident since 1991, and I've owned this apartment building for 17 years. My late husband and I, we wanted to have a property because we love, you know, living in Burbank. There's nowhere else we wanted to live. I became a stay-at-home mom while my husband worked as a software designer, and it was my husband's dream to own a piece of property so that we could have for our future retirement years. And unfortunately, my husband passed away in 2021. And after my husband passed away, I took care of the building, you know, on-site and at home, doing all the paperwork and, you know, paying the bills, making sure the bills are paid, and taking care of my tenants, and, you know, and I also do a weekly visit here, so I make sure my property's okay. And my insurance gone up like 33%, and, you know, property tax, labor costs, like my pest control, my gardener, and other vendors that I use, everything's gone up. And water and power gone up, gas went up, you know, gone up. COVID, I had one tenant who refused to pay rent because he felt he was entitled to free rent, and I lost income about $38,000 for two years. I had a legal eviction, legal fee with $5,000, and a renovation of $25,000 because he destroyed my unit. If the rent cap goes below, I don't think I can afford to save up for more future renovation. You know, I don't own a corporation, I'm just like a mom-and-pop housing provider. I don't have a lot of cash on hand, you know, like, you know.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is John Rumi, sorry, Mark Scroggs, followed by John Rumi.
Good evening, everyone, and Mark Scroggs. I hadn't planned it this way with the high school presentation tonight about voting, which is great. I'm glad these kids are all registering because we've been working in the entertainment community. We're starting to focus more on using our skills and relationships with my clients, my fellow reps, to get people interested in voting, registering to vote, because there's a lot of older people who don't vote also for Prop 50 and for the Committee for the First Amendment. So I want to share a few little things. We've been creating content that's informative and, you can't talk tonight, and entertainment. Most ads and campaigns right now are boring and dull, and people don't pay attention. To paraphrase the great director Billy Wilder, who said, "If you want to sell your message, wrap it in chocolate." Last year, on another note, I saw the musical Suffs on Broadway, which was great. It's going to be at the Pantagons next month, it's also planned to be on PBS at some point. It's all about the women's suffrage movement, which we know a little bit about, but it's a fascinating story, and it really sells what these people went through at the time. As long as the same line Mr. Wilder had said, it made me angry that all these people don't pay attention and care about voting when you saw the suffering and all the sacrifices these people made. So I strongly recommend it, if you can see it or see it on TV. I wanted to also bring up about the Committee for the First Amendment that Jane Fonda recently revitalized. I won't have time, but I'm going to suggest going to thecommitteeforthefirstamendment.com. If you're in the entertainment community, you can sign up and be a part of it. If not, you get a lot of really interesting information. What we've learned is the more things change, the more they stay the same. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is John Rumi, followed by Madlin Gurgis.
Thank you, city council, and I'd like to present a video from a knowledgeable housing provider. Thank you.
I manage approximately 300 units in the San Gabriel Valley. I do not own all of them, I only own a small percentage of them. Insurance on this property alone went up over 300% in the last three years. The fear, again, after the fires in Altadena and Pacific Palisades is that we're going to get another bump to help offset the losses that this company's having. The next big expense has been labor, especially maintenance. Maintenance labor has gone up tremendously. Our labor rates over the last five years have more than doubled. That includes those comp, payroll taxes. For instance, right now, I have a, I'm required by the city of Glendale to replace all my windows, which I do not have the funds for. We're talking about $40,000 investment, and I don't have the money. But at one point, we had 11 staff members, now we're down to five. At some point, what will happen is the properties will have to deteriorate. If we cannot raise rents properly, even on move-outs, there's no incentive for landlords to make these properties nice, and it really discourages the quality of living for people that live in Burbank. The main problem with rent craps is not just the fact that we can't raise some of our rents to the market level, but more importantly, it allows bad tenants to stay in place. We just had to evict a tenant at this building who was a terror tenant. Over four tenants moved because of her. One tenant almost moved, but I had to essentially offset his rent to kind of compensate him for not move. As long as they pay their rent, it's very difficult to prove a case for nuisance or harassment. This property does.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Madlin Gurgis, followed by Martha Ruglis. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Hi. Good evening. Rent control were reducing Burbank into downtown LA. Living in a safe, clean community must have a price. With all respect, if you can't afford it, don't live in it. It's not fair that tenant gets easy while we get stuck with coming up with paying the expenses. You're asking the homeowners to work two jobs, or maybe more, to cover while the renter come home to a nice, clean house that is almost free. You are forcing us to sell, move out, and our beautiful houses will be replaced with a bigger building that is full of careless people. And what you don't understand, the corporate will end up taking over, and the tenant will be thrown out anyway, because there will be a 4,000 one-bedroom apartment that for sure, they won't be able to afford it to replace our beautiful multi-unit houses. You are asking not to pay for us not to pay the living increases. You're asking them not to pay the living increases and put the burden on us, paying mortgage, insurance, and many other expenses that keep rising. I love having a safe, clean environment with the best police officer. All will change when the value of the houses drop as a result of the rent control. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Martha Ruglis, followed by Diana Pulver.
Good night. Thank you. Please play the video.
I don't like rent control because it inhibits the free market system, and the free market system is one of the best in the world, in my opinion. It's the thing that makes people be able to move up the economic ladder. It's what builds a vibrant middle class, which is central to any democracy. The consequences of rent control is the deterioration of property. If I can't cover my expenses to maintain my property, if a roof is costing me $40,000 to replace because of leaks, and I can't cover that, then I'm going to have a building that's going to deteriorate in very short order. When I first bought the building, there was a longtime tenant there. Her husband died, literally, within the first year of us owning the building, my husband and I owning the building, and she had to go back to work. She had a young daughter to support, and we worked with her. If rent control had been in its place, we would have had to raise it the maximum each and every time. I do raise rents simply because of expenses. Painting the building, my painter announced it's going to cost me $10,000 more than what he had previously quoted me. My insurance has gone up tremendously. I got 30% rate increase, and I had to go with an out-of-state carrier. Electrical, tenants have been complaining of sparks in some of the units, so I've now had to replace electrical units, electrical boxes and so forth, all of that. Again, not that I mind, I like, my business has always been one of the things that when people give me an estimate on the building, or insuranceers come by to check to see what condition the building is, they always mention pride of ownership, and that is very.
Did any of you hear what she just said? Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is the Diana Pulver. Welcome, Diana, you have two minutes.
I have two minutes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Diana Pulver. A recent article in the Los Angeles Times highlighted the fact that real estate developers are pulling out of the Los Angeles market. The reason? Excessive regulations and the likelihood of more regulations in the future. If the big guys are pulling out, what hope do us mom-and-pops have? Times are hard for everyone, but more control is not the answer. AB 1482 is sufficient, and a regulation we can all work with. A better use of city resources would be to create a Section 8-like program funded by all Burbank taxpayers, so that the costs are shared and paid by all and not just housing providers. For many politicians, rent control seems like an easy fix to help with housing, but in reality, it stifles small business and creates a lower standard of living for all. I sincerely hope that this is not what you want your political legacy to be. Please do not LA my Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Julio Jaramillo, followed by Susan O'Carroll.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, council, longtime no si, como están? I'm here to speak against rent control, but I'm going to speak for the benefit of the renters, because you guys still aren't getting it, and I've been talking about this for a while. So today, I brought my own slides and my own receipts, and it seems like I got through finally to Assemblyman Schultz, because he passed AB 1050 to bring more supply to the market, the free market. So here's my first one. It says here, "Austin rents have fallen for nearly two years. Here's why. A massive apartment building boom in the Austin-Round Rock region has driven rents downward, downward, supply and demand, not government regulation." Here's another one. "Las Vegas rents are dropping faster than anywhere else in the country." You've all seen Las Vegas, both two zero-tax states, Texas and Nevada, you get it, you get it, and two non-rent control areas. And as Diane just mentioned, from your lefty LA Times, letters to the editor, "LA's mansion tax hits a lot more than just mansions. It hurts renters. The regulation, the mansion tax, no one wants to build here anymore. You put rent control, you're actually hurting the renters, because they're going to stay in their unit, and they're going to be indexed 2, 3, 5, whatever percent you want. Meanwhile, if you let supply come in, rents start to drop. If you drive around Burbank, rents are, vacancies are increasing, because luckily, good old Schultz again saving us with the film credit, but companies are leaving Burbank, so supply increases, rents come down. But the renters that stay in rent control, they stay in their index, they don't want to move, and the rent just goes up every year. If it's a free market, and they can go and recheck the market, and their landlord, their home, housing provider has to say, oh, if I want to keep my unit occupied, I need to adjust my rents down. Austin, down 22%. Vegas, 16%. That's hundreds of dollars. I'm out of time. Don't Venezuela my Burbank. Thank you."
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Susan O'Carroll, followed by Kristi Maloof.
Good evening.
Good evening. Governor Newsom signed SB 79 into law. SB 79 has the potential to have a devastating impact on Burbank neighborhoods, particularly those along the proposed BRT alignment. The only way to protect these neighborhoods and avoid the associated infrastructure costs to the city of SB 79's overdensification of these areas is to kill the BRT. I'm here tonight to ask you to take action to make sure that the BRT does not come to Burbank. SB 79 represents a change in circumstance and new information that could not have been known at the time the BRT's EIR was certified. As a result of SB 79, the BRT will result in significant land use and infrastructure impacts to Burbank and other cities along the alignment, which were not analyzed in the FEIR for the BRT. Burbank needs to require Metro to prepare a supplemental or subsequent EIR for the BRT before taking any discretionary action on the project other than project denial. Metro has lied to you about likely ridership of the BRT, estimating it at double that of other BRT Metro, of the other BRTs Metro operates. In addition, the BRT's forecasted ridership is 23 times the current ridership on the 501 line, which serves the same purposes as the BRT. The BRT makes no sense. It's ridiculous to spend $317 million of taxpayer dollars to destroy Burbank neighborhoods and impose potentially significant infrastructure costs on the city. Currently, you don't know the full cost of the BRT to Burbank and Burbank residents. If you did, I believe that you would want to stop this unnecessary and destructive project. Please stop the BRT. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kristi Maloof, followed by Daniel. Welcome, Kristi. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members and Staff. I have lived in Burbank since 1997 as a renter and now as a housing provider since April of 2013. Still living at the building. It is my home. Value of properties will definitely go down if Burbank does its own rent control. Voters twice have said no. You have spent so much money already with all these tenant protections, the new housing unit. Our properties will turn into lower income with rent control and a rental registry. The new apartments that are being built, most of them start in the high 2000s and 3000s for a very small, small unit. Rental registry will not solve a housing crisis. It will give you data. Who will analyze this data? Data that can possibly be misrepresented? Most data can be found on numerous websites already. The more data does not mean more housing. It will cost us taxpayers and owners to do this registry. Management companies, they charge a fee. A portal to pay online, the tenant pays a fee, a fee. I've been looking into management companies, and I've been looking into realtors because how much more can I handle with all these new Senate bills to do this and do that? This is my home. I want to stay here. Please. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Daniel, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, and fellow Burbank residents. Burbank tenants pay 30% to 50% of their income towards rent and face 8% annual rent hikes in a rental market dominated by predatory corporate investors who extract ever more money from working families. As Burbank tenants organize against the displacement these corporate landlords cause, the real estate industry responds with misinformation and political spending to the tune of $600,000 locally and $150 million statewide in 2024 alone. This is a calculated effort to strip protections and accelerate the hoarding of wealth and property while driving inflation and harming the community. Rent stabilization doesn't seek to solve problems created by the market. It seeks to keep people housed, and it does so very effectively. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Renata Diagidio. Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that one.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Staff, and everybody present in the chamber. Y'all know where I stand on tenant protections, and y'all know where I stand on transportation. I'm obviously in big favor of the BRT, but that's not what I'm here to talk about today. Just to make clear, my timer is not running, so I just want to make sure that like it's going well. Thank you. Sorry for the extra seconds. Anyways, the second thing that I want to say is because we weren't here yesterday, Happy Indigenous Day to everybody. Or as we like to say where I'm from, Feliz Dia de la Raza. I'm very glad that we're celebrating now that day. But what I'm here to talk about today is just on a completely different topic. Federally, living in the United States as a trans person just flat out sucks. It's very difficult. It's making our existence very miserable. But California has been taking a lot of steps towards in order to protect us as much as possible. So the reason why I'm here today, I just want to talk about some of the bills that have been presented to the state level that have been presented as protections for the trans community and the LGBT, and the rest of the LGBTQ. And I would like for all of you to look into these bills. So you can either just like endorse them, congratulate the state for passing them because they're very good bills. I've got a few minutes, so let's see if I can go through them. AB 82 and SB 497. This protects the confidentiality of patients, providers, and volunteers when it comes into healthcare, particularly with trans people. AB 1084 and SB 59, which ensures that old court records may not be, that have a change of name may not be used to dox people. Great bill. SB 418, which protects healthcare from plants and requires up to 12 months of supply for hormones. That got vetoed, which is a bummer. Also vetoed is SB, I'm sorry, AB 554, which covered all FDA-approved meds specifically for HIV prevention. That got vetoed. What a shame. Anyways, here's a really awesome one. SB 727, which mandates that schools and university provide a youth suicide hotline specifically for the LGBT community. What a need for that is there right now. That's a great one. So again, congratulations because that got passed. Gee, only 16 seconds. Anyways, with the few seconds that I have, there's a few more bills that I wish you to look into. But with the last few bills, I'll just say the hits. Abolish ICE, Free Palestine, Housing is a Human Rights, Stop Prioritizing Cars, and Quality of Life relies on your community, not the market. Thank you and for your service.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Renata Diagidio, followed by Liz Backs.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. I have a video. Please do not-
My old apartment, I was forced to move out because a new owner bought the building. And so they, yes, they forced me to move out and so they could fix it up and raise the rent. I like everything about my, my current renter or landlord because when things go wrong, he's always there to help you fix whatever the problem is. I hated when my building was sold to a corporation because they were all about the money. They didn't try to do anything to the building other than, you know, what made them happy. They just, well, my old owner, he was right there. You know, like I said, if he needed something, he was there to fix it. Even though he came a long distance, he was still there, you know, to do whatever needed to be done. But this new corporation, there was nothing. And I have a long story about that because I had a stroke two weeks before my deadline. And they didn't care. They still wanted me out of the building, even though I couldn't afford to, you know, I couldn't afford to do anything because my body was still weak. But they didn't care about that, where current was just totally different. My previous owner, I should say, was just totally different from them, from the corporation. I love Burbank because it feels like home to me. It makes me feel at peace and just comfortable. I felt that way way before I moved here. I felt that way. I just, I just knew it was a-
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Liz Backs, followed by David Donahue.
Hello, everybody. It is wrong to shut down a city council member's voice in a public meeting. This is not just about one person's right to speak. This is our fundamental right to hear all sides of an issue. You can't just silence someone because their viewpoint doesn't align with the loudest group in the room. The Burbank Tenants Union continually acts like they are entitled to dominate the conversation, claiming they deserve to have their voices heard. Every single person in this room has a right to be heard. Just because one side is trying hard to be more aggressive doesn't mean they get to dictate what is said, what it, when it's said, and who gets to say it. And the reason it's gotten to be like this is because certain people on this council and the certain people in the city staff are allowing this group free rein. And let's talk about the rental registry nonsense. Do we honestly believe that a registry built on collecting data is about housing providers who won't be abused? Don't try and lead us to believe otherwise. The potential to misuse, sell, and manipulate that data is terrifying. If you think that's going to end well, you're delusional. This is what you do when you misrepresent people. How you create fear and chaos and while pretending you're fixing the problem. Stop silencing anyone who doesn't toe the line. That's the road we're headed down. First, it's the council members, then the housing providers, then anyone who doesn't agree with the tenants' union. Interesting that this is starting to happen at the Burbank Unified School District Board, too. Just my opinion. We can't be part of this or watch as free speech gets trampled. It's not just about landlords and tenants. It's about the right to speak, the right to be heard, and the right to have an honest conversation. The real injustice is when one side gets to decide who gets a voice and everyone else gets left in the dust. This is also, this is also what just, what just passed SB 79 is doing. We need to stop this.
One moment, Liz. Can you pause her time? I think the mic went out.
I could just get louder because that's what I did. Well, that's what I did. I just got louder.
We need the folks at home to hear her via YouTube.
I used to be a drum major in high school. I can talk really loud. Can you hear me now? Yeah.
There it goes.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. Well, I'm at one second, so I don't know where to go. Start up at-
Give her, give her like a few extra seconds.
A few. Okay. Now I got to think where to start. Okay. This is also what just passed SB 79 is going to do. We must stop this madness. The city of Burbank needs to stop the LA Metro BRT from going through our city, and they need to stop it now. Free speech, everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Mary O'Hare. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members and Staff. My name is David Donahue. I'm speaking on behalf as the President of Burbank Fair Housing. What you've had the pleasure to see is months of work and effort to record the video testimonies of tenants and housing providers that just can't make it into this body, into this chamber. These are the voices. These are the stories that we want you to hear. We want you to see. This is the way we're going to do it. There's going to be a number of other people that are waiting in the queue on, that are going to call in. And first, I just want to say thank you so much to the people that are here, that have been here for the first time. I really appreciate the effort. And all of the people that helped us produce these, they are produced for you. For you to see their stories because I know you're busy, and it's going to be difficult, and I know you want to hear them. So as we go through, we have 16 of them that we've produced. We hope that all 16 will be played tonight. If they do not, our administrative assistant is going to email them all to your email addresses. So whatever of our 16 are not done tonight, they will be played, they will get sent to you so they can be played. And as I have said to this dais before, we're doing this when the items are not agendized because we can have three minutes. We can have two minutes. It's not going to be the 28th when we're going to have 60 seconds, and this chamber is packed to the gills and so is everything else. This is our opportunity to be heard so that you can see what we're working on and continue to work on. We will, this effort is not going to stop. And again, to everybody who's come tonight, who's going to be speaking, thank you. I so greatly appreciate you doing something that I know is not comfortable. And also, you know, your Tuesday night. So again, thank you all for your service and for the work. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mary O'Hare, followed by Harry Temerian.
Thank you for your service. As you might remember, the time that I come up here is when I want to talk about safety. That is what I'm passionate about. So there's four items I want to talk to you about. One, SB 79 really has financial safety issues for the city of Burbank. So I am asking you to do what LA is doing right now, which is to look into, before we get into cleanup bills, what SB 79 is actually going to cost you. So please, if the staff is not already doing this, you should have them do this and do it quickly because the cleanup bills come in in February. And what that means is we want you to look at the infrastructure and how much it's going to cost. Number two, we ask this council to direct the staff to come up with an alternate plan. Number one, get rid of the very high fire zones. You should not be building our future large apartments and condos in fire zones. Number two, get rid of, to the extent you can, ones in high and moderate fire zones. Why? Altadena, 40% of it that was burnt down was not in very high fire zones. Number three, we are now entering the Santa Ana season. In the south of Burbank, fires are likely to start, not in Burbank, but in the city of LA, the county of LA, Glendale, Griffith Park, all of which are not in our control. Oops. Utilities and also-
Thank you for your comment, Mary. That's your time.
Anyway, I will talk to you about those other two.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harry Temerian.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Harry Temerian, Burbank Association Realtors. It's becoming increasingly clear that this council has taken sides when it comes to the issue of rent control. You've chosen to stand with the tenants' special interest groups, passing a full protection ordinance, allocating over $600,000 in relocation assistance, and holding private meetings where only the tenants' unions were invited. Meanwhile, housing providers, the very people who invest in this city, maintain its housing, and contribute to its tax base, have been shut out, dismissed, and vilified. Let's not forget, housing providers, whether they live in the city or not, keep this city, and they fund the very infrastructure that keeps this city running. Their property taxes pay for the streets that you drive on, the parks your children play in, the schools that your children attend, and the police and fire services that protects you all. Yet this council has painted them as villains, as if providing housing were something to be ashamed of. What should have happened, what real leadership looks like, is to have reminded these tenant groups of the facts. The citizens of Burbank have already spoken, not once, but twice. In 2020, 63% of Burbank voters rejected rent control. And again, in 2024, voters rejected any form of rent control or stabilization. The message could not be clearer. Burbank does not want rent control. Council, you were elected to represent all of Burbank, not just one group, not just the loudest voices in the room. That means listening to the homeowners, the housing providers, and the small landlords and the residents who keep this community strong. On the 28th, when the tenants' unions will be busting people in who don't live here, who don't work here, and who don't pay a dime in taxes to this city, remember that. Remember who you actually represent. You represent the people of Burbank, and those people have already spoken loud and clear. No rent control. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam City Clerk, let's go to the phones. Madam City Clerk, can we go to the phones?
Yes. The first caller is Arby Garabayan.
With rent control, the consequences that I really fear is that the mom and pop, I'm a renter from a small, personal rent landlord, is that he'll be forced to sell his units, and then I'm at the mercy of a large corporation. And then I'm at the mercy of a large corporation, and I'll lose my humanity, my touch with my landlord. Well, to be honest, I'm not totally against it. I just think it needs to be equitable. The rent control I've seen so far is very heavily for the tenant, and I think that regular, non-big corporation rental agencies, like mom and pop, you'd say, need to have more support. What I like most about my rental unit is that it's awesome. It's large enough. I moved in right after COVID, and it is large enough for me to have been housebound and not suffer cabin fever. It has a lot of old heart form. I like older buildings than I do more modern ones. I just prefer them. And what I like most about my landlord is that he is most accommodating, and we've got to know each other on a one-on-one basis. And the way I was raised, that's the way you conduct business. My landlord actually was very gracious when I first moved in. I had misunderstood, I was recently hired by the county, and I misunderstood their pay information, and which I wrote incorrectly on my application. And I discussed it with my landlord, and he was very gracious to allow me to continue to become a renter. Should my building be sold and bought by a corporate entity, I'd be very stressed. It would be an incredibly stressful time for me, time of uncertainty, since I wouldn't have a voice in the sale. I would find it incredibly unnerving. Ease off the gas pedal. If you're going to be pushing rent control, you have to consider all parties and not just your own side. That would be with any issue, but especially here, because of the diverse section of rent control.
All right, let's take the next caller.
The next caller would like to remain anonymous.
Hi, you're on with the Burbank City Council. You have two minutes.
I'd like to say that I'm barely breaking even with my rental units. I paid permits for plumbing, garage, electrical. I'm breaking even, then I've had a contractor rip me off. He won't do the work after being paid a lot. I just think the insurance was trying to drop me. It's a problem when you have to get an attorney in on a bad contractor. Attorneys are outrageously expensive. It's just, you know, if it seems like I'm making profit one year, I'm bringing that quote-unquote profit onto another year, just to pay for the permits and contractors who don't always do a good job. And I was offended by one animator once. She blamed landlords for losing her job. I think she should blame that on AI and not on landlords. I think she should blame it on AI and the entertainment industry outsourcing, possibly. Anyhow, I think it's too one-sided against the landlord. And also, with AD 1482 through the state, it's a nightmare to get rid of a bad tenant. It's just so, the laws are so one-sided. I don't think I'd ever want to buy in LA County period ever again. Roll the video, please.
Years of age, had two divorces and a business failure, and had nothing. But at least I was working. I saved $500 a month, and in three years, I accumulated $18,000. Well, obviously, that doesn't buy anything in real estate. So with two other people, we gathered together, saved up enough money for a down payment on a triplex. That's how I got started. At this point, I'm 77 years of age. I'm a full-time landlord. This is my retirement. Cost of everything, from trash hauling to utilities, goes up continually. As a good example, when I bought the first property in Burbank, we were paying all the utilities, and it ran about...
Thank you for your comment.
Our next caller is Jackie Watman.
Hi, Jackie, you're on with the Burbank City Council. You have two minutes.
All right, thank you. Please play the video I submitted.
Rent control, because it's not good for the city. You can look around at the cities that have rent control and what has happened in those cities over time. California has 500 cities in the state. Less than 30 of them have enacted rent control. The voters in Los Angeles have gone with this since 1976. It hasn't helped anybody as far as affordable housing goes. If we implement this in Burbank, you're going to have fewer affordable housing, you're going to have fewer rent units at all. Because what's going to happen? The people who are in favor of this are trying to say, oh, well, it's going to help people stay in their apartments and not get moved out. They're not going to be able to stay in their apartments because they're not going to be able to get into their apartments, because people who don't need the help of rent control will stay in those units for a very long time and take rental units out of the city. This is just a really, really bad idea. Look at the cities that have implemented it. Look at how poorly they're run. This is not, this is not for the city of Burbank. We're smarter than that. Not to mention the fact that the citizens of Burbank have voted for this no less than four times against rent control. And the city council, who is just going to disrespect the constituents and do what they want to do on some misguided mission that they think they know better than everybody, rent control will take affordable housing out of the city. What's going to happen in the city is that we are going to lose the affordable rental units we have now. Big developers are going to come in, buy out smaller rental units, and they're going to develop these properties at premium prices. So what used to cost $2,500 for a two-bedroom is now going to be $4,500. And people who need those kind of roller rents aren't going to have them. That is no way to go. There are better units, there is more affordable...
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Jennifer Bax.
Hello, and good evening, Madam Mayor, Assistant Mayor, all other council members. Also greetings to each and every meeting attendee, both physical and those watching remotely, especially my fellow Burbankians. Let me just start off by saying that I hope you and all of your families and loved ones are doing well. Lastly, I would just like to ask that the video I provided be played at this time.
Pushing rent control, I would say that careful what you wish for.
This is not for the city of Burbank. We're smarter than that.
Part of Burbank's charm is small businesses, and I hope that residences like mine can continue on.
This is pushing and punishing the wrong people, and that definitely won't solve anything. Thank you.
Don't LA my Burbank.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Sam Kuijien.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Sam Kuijien, and I have applied to join the Board of Directors for the Burbank Housing Corporation. I've worked in the real estate industry for the last 10 years. For the last four years, I focused my career on the acquisition, preservation, and operation of affordable housing communities across the United States. I was born and raised in Burbank and would love the opportunity to contribute my expertise to Burbank in helping preserve and expand much-needed affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Danielle Vincent.
Hi, I'm Liz Ludwig, and I'm a homeowner here in Burbank. And for nearly two years, I've been following the city council meetings. I've been growing more and more concerned about what's happening to the people who are small rental property owners. In the process of following all this, my work has slowed down. And I'm not in a position of luxury, so I've been trying to explore other ideas, other ways to survive, and other ways to stay in my home. And one of the few realistic options I saw was to build an ADU, a small unit that I could rent out and to help cover my bills, so I didn't have to move out of my house. I wasn't looking to get rich, and I just wanted to stay afloat. But I'm afraid to do that now. I'm afraid because every time I turn around, there's another layer of restrictions being implemented by the city of Burbank, another law that makes it harder for small property owners to function. The state laws that California has put in place are already strict. But what I see coming from the city council is even a more aggressive, like you're targeting the very people who live here and contribute in this city. It feels like you're trying to push them out of the picture entirely. I'm scared to rent. I'm scared to rent my property out, because I don't know if I'll ever get my property back. I'm scared I'll be forced to charge below-market rent while my own mortgage, insurance, and repair costs are going to keep going up. I'm afraid that if I ever need to end the lease for any reason, I'll be blocked, punished, or even sued. This is not housing justice, in my opinion. This is pushing and punishing the wrong people. I'm not a corporate housing provider, and I don't have a legal team.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Amal Salib.
Hello. I have a building in Burbank. I came from Rochester to invest some money. I like the city of Burbank. It is nice and quiet, and that's what I like about. And I'm barely doing my mortgage with little bit of profit, trying to keep all the, like, instruction or fixing, whatever the tenant needs. And I raise the rent not too much for them to keep up. And it's not fair, really, for everything going up, and even the tenants themselves, the income going up. Why, me as a landlord, doesn't increase my rent? It's not fair, it's not logic. And this is nice and quiet city. Why you want to ruin it? I'm against rent control. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Zee Zaiman.
Hi, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I have a video, if it could be played.
So I've lived in Burbank now for 20, for over 20 years. I came from the Midwest, and, you know, even though Burbank has, you know, some of the big movie studios and other businesses, it still felt very much like a small town, you know, the ones I grew up in. I've lived here in this apartment for most of that time, and I've known the owner for decades. I see him around almost every day, you know, maintaining the building, keeping things looking really nice. And his is a true mom and, an actual mom and pop business, and I can tell he takes a lot of pride in his work. The cost of living has steadily increased, as expected, but, you know, the last few years has been a little more difficult, challenging. I, you know, sometimes question how long I'll be able to live here, if that can be sustainable in the long term. So housing is a tough subject to talk about. A lot of times, it feels like it's us versus them. And, you know, it's on the surface a business transaction, but, you know, when it comes to one's home, it's personal and emotional. And, you know, my initial impulse is to side with renters. I am one, after all. But I know, like, a lot of things, it's not always so easy. My hope is for empathy from each side. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of that going around these days.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is George Garrow.
Hi, George, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Council. Boy, how do I follow that last video? That was a touching one. You know, this rent control issue, I think, is causing a lot of conflict in the community, a lot of conflict. And not only that, but it's also damaging the market, because it's scaring people with low rents into increasing their rents. And people are fearful of decreasing their asking rents, because once the rents are lowered under rent control, you can't bring it back up, so it's a ratchet effect. So as a result, the market's getting squeezed, and it's injected a lot of fear into the market, and that's not good. Okay? Now, what's the solution? Well, the Landlord-Tenant Roundtable produced multiple solutions that were unanimous. People came together and said landlord, then tenant, both agree on these solutions. So let's go back and look at those solutions. Let's not look at the divisive policies that other, that have not helped affordability in neighboring jurisdictions. Let's talk about the registry. Oh, boy. You know, the registry is going to escalate the conflict, because that really makes people upset when they get a notice in the mail saying that now there's a new registry that they have to comply with and pay a fine, et cetera. And how about the fact that it infringes upon the privacy of both the landlords and the tenants? That's not good either. That's just going to throw gas on the fire, I think. So really, let's cease from this conflicting policy. Let's pursue policies that we could all agree on. I think that that will be much better, such as a fund that is needs-based, means-tested, something that actually helps people who can't afford the rent, not just benefiting everyone with a blanket, you know?
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Thank you.
The next caller is Heidi Sorenzo.
Hello, Heidi, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Please play the video.
So I've lived in Burbank now for 20, for over 20 years. I came from the Midwest, and, you know, even though Burbank has, you know, some of the big movie studios and other businesses...
So it looks like this commenter submitted the same video that the last commenter submitted?
Yeah, the city has a video policy that says the same piece of video can't be shown by multiple speakers.
So if you're listening, we won't be able to play the video, given the city policy? Can they? Well, can they still do public comment on their own?
Yes.
If you're still on the line, you can still do public comment and share your thoughts.
Just don't run control and don't LA my Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is April Fanju.
Hi, April, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Hello, please play the video, and I hope it's not a duplicate.
941 North Frederick Street, Apartment B. I think rent control, it has its downs, it has its downside about it. I like the fact that my landlord, he's been amazing, and he's had the liberty to do whatever we need to get done for the apartment, which is always great. I remember about a year ago, when my landlord, when Above &amp; Beyond, to help us, it was raining. I think we had a little flash flood, and we had a leak in our bedroom, so I called him, and he came over the next day, and he came with someone to inspect it. And most people would just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna patch up the hole. But he went out of his way, and he just installed a whole new roof to the apartment. And I thought that was amazing, within the week, which was awesome. And ever since then, we've never had an issue. And whenever he need, whenever we need anything, he's there the next day, and if he could be there the day of, he's there, because, you know, he has the time and liberty and the money to do it, because, you know, none of these crazy laws are going into place. My landlord was to sell his property to a large corporation. I would totally dislike it. I can't, I, part of the reason I moved here was because it wasn't owned by a corporate. It was owned privately, and I've had nothing but amazing experiences with my landlord that's private. I would like my landlord to be in... I would like my landlord to be in charge of the rent himself, not anybody else. I've only really lived in Sherman Oaks and Burbank. The difference between housing in Burbank and Los Angeles, I feel like Los Angeles, since it's mostly corporate-owned properties, it's gone downhill a lot. And now, and then, living in Burbank, it's been amazing. I love it, and it's, thanks to my landlord and the experience that I've had with him, I plan on buying a home here in Burbank to stay in the area. Sixty-three percent of you know that it's the only fair thing to do.
Thank you for your call.
The last caller is Emily Gabel-Luddy.
Hi, former Mayor Gabel-Luddy, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
SB 79 wasn't about getting enough density. It was about putting the bullseye on single-family neighborhoods. Scott Weiner's target wasn't density, it was location. His office wrote that concentrating affordable housing on high-traffic arterials exposed renters to more noise, worse air quality, and greater traffic. In short, the issue wasn't that we did not find enough multifamily zoning to meet our housing needs, it's that we found it outside of single-family and low-density zones, and Scott Weiner didn't want to allow that. So the state did. SB 79 wasn't about affordable housing because the first 10 units could be market rate with parking for residents who will not ride transit. The result is Burbank spent millions of dollars on planning studies, community engagement, that are no longer valid because of SB 79. Examples include the housing element, our Golden State and Media District-specific plans. The community and council deserve a full accounting of the money spent. What will be the cost for future planning to redo these plans and meet our infrastructure needs? As you know, the city's wastewater treatment plant does not have enough capacity at the current time. Obviously, SB 79 upends that forecast with thousands more units. As recently as this year, staff wrote that their work on these critical issues has been, quote, "complicated by the growing and dynamic demands of meeting state-mandated increases in the housing unit." SB 79 will need cleanup legislation. Council can take immediate steps and call upon our legislators, Nick Schultz and Caroline Menjivar, who voted NVR, or no vote recorded, to follow up with language to address these important problems about waste of money and infrastructure. And they will be able to vote yes on the needed corrections that you advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Not sure if y'all are clapping for the speaker, because we're done. Thank you. That was our last caller. And the end. Thank you for the honesty. All right. That is our public comment. Now is the time for a response from city staff or council. Mr. City Attorney, you have the mic.
Yes, I was struggling with my mic. Um, I just want to clarify for the speaker that referenced council members, uh, preventing each other from participating in the tenant protections. The council members, uh, don't censor each other based upon conflicts of interest. My office actually solicited, uh, Fair Political Practices Commission opinions on three different council members' interests, and the council member's ability to participate, uh, we've advised should be consistent with the FPPC opinion letter. So just to be clear, it wasn't in any internal council decision. Those were, uh, conflict opinions that I solicited from the state agency.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Um, any other staff response? Seeing none, I will go to my colleagues who would like to go first. I already, I already sent them home. Mary's here for something else. Councilor Anthony.
Sorry. Uh, thank you all for coming out. Firstly, uh, there's a number of topics that were covered today that we'll be dealing with in about two weeks. The Committee for the First Amendment, um, that is a, um, rejoined program. Mr. Scruggs, you mentioned that, uh, it had previously existed. For those in the public, it was during, uh, the McCarthy era, and, um, it was a collection of entertainment professionals that stood up, uh, to say media and free speech is, uh, is paramount in this, um, country. And I'm happy to see that it has reconvened and that people are standing up for their freedom of speech. To that end, um, Ms. Maxx, um, last year, we spent a great deal, last year, two years ago, we spent a great deal of time in this council, um, redoing a lot of the way we do our public comment to ensure that everyone does get their time. If at any point you feel you're not being heard, or if there's somebody who is being silenced, please reach out to us. We do not want that to happen. We want everyone to be able to come to this microphone and speak their piece. That is, that is important. So we, we can talk about it, uh, after the meeting, or, or if you can email me. But it is absolutely, uh, a priority of this council to make sure everybody gets, uh, their voice heard. Um, and then, lastly, I would just say, you know, if you're going to build an ADU, just know that Costa-Hawkins is a state law that's been around for thirty years, and it prevents any rent control on new development. You can look that up. Thank you.
All right. Who would like to go next? Councilor Mullins.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate everyone who received their proclamations early, DV Task Force, um, also Suzanne Wertz, and, um, the Clerk's Cup. Great job. Thank you for continuing the program. It's a wonderful thing to get our youth involved in the election process. For everyone that came in tonight and spoke about the topic, uh, of rent control, registry, as you probably all know, and some of you have mentioned it, it's on the agenda for the 28th. I encourage you, thank you for being here, thank you for speaking tonight. Encourage you to come back on the 28th and, and listen to the discussion and see what we're going to talk about when it's on the agenda. Unfortunately, we can't say anything tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I appreciate you being here, all of you, and lis, you know, weighing in on the subject. And whatever else, as far as boards and commissions, uh, I know one member called. We will address that on the agenda later on tonight. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Councilor Mullins. Councilor Rosati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to, uh, thank the folks on the Domestic Violence Task, Task Force for all the work that they do in our community. Congrats to the Team Burrows for the Mayor's Cup win. Clerk. Mayor, cush.
It feels like a win for me when Burrows wins.
It's a win for the mayor. Um, uh, thank you to Ms. Garcia and Prescott for your update on the Olympics. It could be very exciting here in Burbank, and I look forward to all that. Assemblymember Schultz, thank you for coming down. I'm glad that you see the value in me speaking about housing. Thank you to all the housing providers for coming out and, uh, and for your efforts. Uh, thank you for the tenants' union for coming out as well. Ms. O'Connell, um, and also Ms. Gabel-Luddy and Ms. O'Hare talked about SB 79. I did ask for a comprehensive breakdown of that bill. I know that staff is, is going through it, um, so that we can get a full rundown of the impacts of that with BRT. So, um, so we'll see where that, what that direction, uh, goes. And as far as Ms. Gabel-Luddy, uh, asking for, um, comments or us submitting comments to, uh, our assembly and senator, local assembly and senator regarding the corrections for, uh, SB 79, I think maybe that's something we, we should probably discuss, um, when we get the analysis. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rosati. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all who came out tonight and advocated for your thoughts and positions. And thanks to those who, uh, also contacted us since the last meeting and met with us and connected with us. And thanks for those who called in. I echo the second sentiments about the presentations and the reports that we received, very exciting about the Olympics and the other presentations. And the housing topic we will address on October 28th, and we'll talk about it at great length then. I do have a follow-up question about SB 79. Several folks brought that up, and, uh, Councilmember Rosati mentioned that staff is going to do an analysis of SB 79. Is that, is that correct?
May I? Go ahead.
Uh, we were working on a memo.
A memo, okay.
But I, I, I sense that we may have to bring back a report. We will be asked to bring back a verbal report later on in the night. That's just my sense.
Got it.
I, I actually have it on my, to bring back a report, so thank you both for showing your support for it.
Uh, there's no showing of support. It's not agendized.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
You can bring it up at the end of the agenda.
See what you guys did to me right now? Okay. My apologies, my apologies. All right.
The city manager is very intuitive.
Yes, let's just say that. And then, lastly, um, tonight was a number of videos, which I think is a great way to prepare statements ahead of time and to share things in a cohesive way, and it may not be as intimidating as coming to the lectern. I would, if it's okay, could we get a quick reminder sent to us as a memo of the video policy, just so that we know? Because it's been a while since we've had a number of videos, and just so that we can...
Yes, we have it. We could, uh, email that to you, uh, tomorrow.
Great, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you to all, all of you who came to speak tonight. As you all know, we will be discussing this issue and, and anything having to do, a myriad of things having to do with rental topics on the 28th. So we hope to see you again then. And I do agree, the video format was, was pleasant. Thank you for that. Um, and for folks who had those videos cut off, I believe, we're, we're happy to receive them and have them sent to us via email. Thank you. Let's move on. All right. You already got your response?
I know, I just have a question of, for our city attorney. The memo asking for the video policy, uh, does it include, um, uh, information on sequential videos?
So let's ask that question at the end during the additional agenda item section. Thank you. All right. All right. To do the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have seven items tonight on the consent agenda. Item one is approval of the city council minutes of the joint meeting of September 30th, 2025, and the dark meeting of October 7th, 2025. Item two is approval of the parking authority minutes of the joint meeting of September 9th, 2025. Item three is adoption of a resolution amending fiscal year 2025, 2026 citywide fee schedule for the valet parking meter fee. Item four is adoption of resolutions ratifying and approving grant applications for the Magnolia Power Project with the California Energy Commission for the bulk grid asset enhancements for the grid reliability program, and authorizing the BWP general manager as the city manager's designee to negotiate and execute all related agreements and forms. Item five is adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of funds from the state citizens' option for public safety program in the amount of $323,374.11, and amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget by appropriating funds. Item six is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act program agreements with the Verdugo Consortium and the City of Glendale. And item seven is to authorize the general manager of Burbank Water and Power to enter into an electrical services agreement with SJ4 Burbank LLC. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the consent calendar as it was read in the record.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion, a second. Madam City Clerk, call the vote. Councilmember Anthony.
Abstain on five, yes on the rest.
Councilmember Mullins.
Yes on all.
Councilmember Rosati.
Yes on all.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Thank you. Great. All right. Now we move on to our public hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing, um, for the acceptance of public comment on the proposed renewal of the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District. If you wish to comment on this item in person, please present a salmon public hearing card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. Before we begin, are there any disclosures from city council related to this hearing?
No.
No.
Great. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Great. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, including emails and other documents?
You do.
Great. And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all council members?
We did not receive any.
Great, thank you. Now, will the representative from the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us? Welcome, Ms. Hamzouyan. I knew you were here for something else.
Yes, I was. Good evening, um, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members, members of the city council, Mary Hamzouyan with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we are holding the first of two public hearings regarding the proposed renewal of the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District, or TBID. The purpose of this hearing is to receive and accept public comment related to the renewal process. The TBID was originally established in 2011 and has successfully operated for more than fourteen years. It is comprised of hotels in Burbank that have more than 25 rooms and is designed to attract overnight visitors, boost hotel occupancy, and generate increased local sales tax and transient occupancy tax revenue for the city. Funding the TBID, for the TBID's marketing efforts, is collected through an assessment charged to the overnight visitor. This model ensures a stable and dedicated funding source that directly supports the growth of the tourism industry. On September 9th, 2025, the city council adopted a resolution of intention to renew the TBID, officially starting the renewal process. Following that action on September 12th, written notices were mailed to all hotel owners in the district informing them of the resolution and giving them the opportunity to submit formal opposition to the renewal. A petition in favor of the proposed renewal was signed by fourteen of the eighteen hotels, representing over 91% of the district's total assessment, which is well above the 50% threshold required to move forward. If renewed, the TBID would enter a new 10-year term beginning July 1st, 2026, and is projected to generate approximately $2.27 million annually through a 1.75% assessment on room revenue. Currently, the TBID operates on a 1% assessment and generates approximately $1.4 million annually. The increasing funding will allow for expanded marketing to attract visitors and funding for projects that enhance the visitor experience, like a dedicated shuttle service, monument, and weight-finding signage, and more. By moving forward with this renewal, council is reinforcing its commitment to growing the, and enhancing Burbank's tourism sector and ensuring the city remains a competitive and attractive destination for both leisure and business travelers. To summarize the process, tonight's public hearing is for accepting public comment only. No council action will be taken this evening. If written opposition is submitted by hotels representing more than 50% of the proposed assessments, and it is not withdrawn by the final hearing, the renewal process will end, and no action can be taken for one year. A second public hearing is currently scheduled for November 18th, 2025. If written opposition remains below 50% through that date, council may formally consider and vote on the renewal at that time. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. All right. Let's see. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who was, to speak on this matter. You may address the council on this public hearing item only. Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have, and how many callers in the queue?
We have neither of either.
None? Okay. For the folks in the audience, going once, going twice? Seeing none? I believe I now declare the public hearing closed. Would you like to make any further remarks?
I have no further remarks.
Okay. In that case, this was just a hearing to take and listen to comment. Does anybody from the council have anything to respond to at all? Does anybody from the council have anything to respond to at all? Councilwoman Mullins?
I have just one question for the public's sake. The additional $875,000 that would be collected due to the increase to 1.75%, could you briefly just tell us where is that, funds are going to go? Is it going to marketing? Is it going through more programs? Just quickly, thank you.
Thank you for the question, council member. Yes, the additional funding would go towards marketing. It would also go through destination development, which is something to enhance the visitor experience. So, as I mentioned, potentially a shuttle service, more art exhibits like the Elephant Parade, more of the monument signage and weight finding program for a citywide initiative, and then also the superhero statues that we have. So funding more of those types of installations throughout the city to, again, generate more visitation and enhance the experience for the visitors.
Thank you. Another question. The elephant, oh, I think, what is it called, the, was it a show?
Elephant Parade?
Parade, that's what it was. Just curious, when, when people see that or the community just wonders, like, how much, how many people actually come to the city because they want to see the elephant and the benefits that we gain out of it? You know, our local businesses, hotels, just briefly let us know, having those type of arts or having the parade, the type of people that are to attract to our cities so they come and visit and know what we have here in Burbank?
Sure, it's, it's multiple factors, right? So you're trying to enhance the visitor experience by having the art exhibits and then we market and promote that the art exhibit here is here in the city, both on a domestic and national scale. You get a lot of media coverage from, from various news reporting and attractions. And then, of course, you have the social media aspect of it. So we have a huge social media following, we hire influencers to come and showcase that this art exhibit is here in the city. And then the elephants were located in various locations throughout the city, including multiple hotels, so a lot of the hotel guests were able to experience that and talk about it. And our hotels were very happy with the art exhibit and continue to discuss it now. And there's, there's, there's more plans in the future to add additional art exhibits throughout the city. So there's, you know, a lot of different factors that go into play, but it's also trying to change that perception and increase that cultural experience overall. So it's not just with one exhibit, but, but multiple different areas that we're trying to achieve.
Perfect. That's, I wanted you to share that. I think it's important to know all the work and efforts that goes behind the scene and the, and the logic behind having the elephant parade, having the statues. It does attract people to the city of Burbank. And I know you guys do a great job, you know, promoting Burbank and through social media and so I appreciate all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? No? All right, well, thank you so much for being here and if folks have something to say, there's another hearing. So, all right, we now move on to our reports to council. Oh, I have to close the public hearing.
I think you do have to accept the comments, yeah.
I guess, okay. I now accept, or should, do we have, need a motion for that? Okay. Let's see what the last one here. I now declare the public hearing closed. And I accept the public comment on the proposed renewal of the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District. All right. I now call the hearing closed. Sorry, that's not super clear in the script. All right, we now have two reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as they have not spoken on this item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your public comment card now, as no additional cards will be accepted once a comment period commences after staff's presentation. The first report to council tonight is the appointment to fill one vacancy on the Burbank Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a full two-year term. I welcome our city clerk, Ms. Kimberly Clark, to present this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I will be presenting reports to council item number one. On September 2nd, 2025, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for the vacancy on the Burbank Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a two-year term. This vacancy is a scheduled vacancy for board member Ruth Martinez-Bannon, who serves as one of the two representatives from the city of Burbank and whose term is set to expire on October 31st, 2025. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to the Burbank leader, and myburbank.com, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, community groups and organizations, and through constant contact email notifications. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office was Wednesday, October 1st, 2025, at 5 o'clock PM. The city clerk's office received a total of five applications for the board: Joseph Arnone, Catherine Laster, Leona Rollins, Danny Alice, and Samuel Kamujin. The applications are listed in the order received. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Do we have any, before we begin, public comment? So are, we have one public comment card, you will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Danny Alice. Welcome, Danny, you have three minutes.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself to council. I had to apply for the position of the Burbank Housing Corporation. I've spent many years working as a technology director for property management companies as well as a development company. And so during this time, we've built and delivered thousands of standard and low-income units, so I feel very close to the mission of the Burbank Housing Corporation. As a resident, renter, and business owner here in Burbank, I'd like to use my experience to benefit the community, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment and thank you for applying. All right, now, seeing no more public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period and we'll move on to council questions or deliberation. Vice Mayor Takahashi, I believe you had a question?
I do have a question, yes, thank you. Madam City Clerk, we received, I believe, an email earlier today about how there might have been a miscommunication about when the applicants were receiving the information of when to, when the decision was going to be made about the position. Am I correct in that and can you?
It wasn't exactly a miscommunication, one step in our process. We do have five of these coming in rapid succession. We do have a couple of new staff members and a mistake was made and I did respond to Councilmember Mullins' email, I believe everybody was copied on that.
Yeah.
We started a new process, and I believe you set this in motion, where we, in the past, we didn't necessarily respond and say a formal email saying anything to the applicants. Now we send out an, an email routinely that says, "Thank you for applying, we encourage you to reach out to council." I cop, I copied and pasted the body of that email into the, into my response. That email was not sent out. I personally called all five applicants, I made contact with four of them, and the email did go out late and we did the best we could, but I do apologize for the oversight and we will take steps to ensure it doesn't happen again.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, the reason why I ask is because unusually this time, we didn't, I didn't receive any requests for contact to discuss the position and usually we, we get at least a few. And so I, I was just wondering if maybe that might be, it makes it, for me at least, a little bit more difficult to decide when I'll get a chance to talk to the applicants and one-on-one. But I just want to put it out there for consideration as we're deliberating tonight and get your thoughts on that.
Councilwoman Mullins, and thank you for that, Vice Mayor Takahashi.
I agree, I mean, the reason I sent the email was, I found it, it was a little odd that no, none of the five applicants contacted us and I personally tried to reach the majority of them this afternoon with limited time. I was able to get ahold of one of the applicants, Samuel, who's, he called tonight. Unfortunately, we didn't connect, but thank you for coming tonight. So yeah, I, I am, I understand that this, we, we do like to talk to the applicants. As I explained to one of the applicants, that this is kind of like a job interview. I want to know who you are, I want to learn about you. So I'm flexible, whatever council wishes to do, whether we want to extend it for another week or two, or we take a vote based on the resume and we can move from here tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mullins. Councilwoman Anthony?
Can I, can I ask, we got another email that said the incumbent was not able to submit an application on time. Do we reach out to the incumbent when their time is up?
Yes, yes, we do. Ms. Martinez-Bannon did get an email.
Okay.
Explaining that her term was up and encouraging her to reapply if she so desired. And we had a communication indicating that she just missed the deadline, she forgot.
Okay.
And I, if I may, Madam Mayor, I wasn't suggesting that we open it to, you know, because we do have five applicants. But, I mean, reading the resumes, looking at their qualifications and whatever, you know, I'm flexible if everybody wants to go move forward with appointments or we want to interview them first.
I just have one question on, on that note. Madam City Clerk, can you tell us which applicant you weren't able to reach? Is it somebody that didn't speak tonight?
One of the applicants, Catherine Laster, when I called the number, I got a different person who seemed a little confused and said it's not the right number, but then I said, but that is the number I'm calling. So we read the number back and forth and she said, well, I know the person. And I said, would you be able to get her a message? And she said, yes. So I didn't personally make contact with her.
Okay, and did we send out, even though it was late, did we end up sending out that email?
The emails went out midday.
Midday, okay. That's not a lot of time.
Madam Mayor, we did receive, I, I just happened to be sitting in front of my computer. We did receive two emails, there was a response back from Samuel and from Leona, am I correct? We did receive a response saying, so that really gave me the indication that they were, they did receive the city clerk's message.
Okay, so we have three out of the five applicants who communicated back with us. What is, how is council feeling about this? Are we ready to vote or do we want to give them?
We have, we have some qualified applicants on here, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, well, thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi, for bringing it up. I, I also, it's a little troubling when that happens because it gives us a little bit of concern, but since most of the folks seem to have replied, seen the email, called in some way, shape, or form, then I'm also comfortable moving forward with, with the vote? Okay, great, so let's vote. I will introduce each name and show of hands. Joseph Arnone, Catherine Laster, Leona Rollins, Danny Alice, and Samuel Kamujin.
Can we go ahead and make that a unanimous?
Samuel Kamujin is appointed, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, can we make that unanimous?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Anthony. All right, we have a new appointee. All I will say, Danny, thank you for applying, thank you for coming down here, it does speak volumes, but please, please, please look at our other openings, we have a lot of board and commission openings consistently and we'd love to have you serve on, on one of our boards and commissions. Just from what you set up here, I think your experience could be invaluable, quite a few of our boards and commissions. Email us, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I see their heads nodding, so I think we'd love to chat with you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down here.
Yes, definitely, thank you.
All right, let's move on to our next report to council. The second report to council tonight is the introduction of an ordinance to adopt by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Codes, California Wildland Urban Interface, City of Burbank Local Amendments, and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code and any amendments thereto, and adoption of a resolution making express findings and determinations that modifications to the 2025 California Building Standards Codes are reasonably necessary due to local climatic, geological, topographical, or environmental conditions. I now welcome, after all that, Russell Friesland, Plan Check Manager, to please present the report.
Thank you.
Welcome. Surprisingly, that was not the report. Welcome, Mr. Friesland.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members Mullins, Anthony, and Rosati, city staff and members of, of the public. I am Russell Friesland, Plan Check Manager for the city, the Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Department. Tonight, Building and Safety Division with the Fire Department is presenting the 2025 California Building Triannual Code Adoption. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the additions of the building code and provides ease to the state for implementation. Each municipality has one year to review, amend, and adopt the code. On January 1st, 2026, these codes, whether or not adopted by municipality, will go into effect. If a city proposes any amendment, these must be adopted by the municipality and it must be justified on a basis of climatic, environmental, geological, or topographical conditions. These amendments must generally be more restricted than the source code. Assembly Bill 130, or as passed 306, was passed on June 30th, 2025, and has made significant changes to the adoption of the building code. This bill prohibits local municipalities from amending the building code starting October 1st of 2026 until June 1st of 2031, specifically for residential units. Unless the California Building Standards Commission has reviewed and deemed the changes as necessary as an emergency standard to protect health and safety, the code cannot be altered. This change signifies the state's intent to streamline residential development standards and produce regulatory variation across jurisdictions, particularly in support of housing production goals. The city's proposed local amendments for this code cycle has carefully been viewed to ensure consistency with the new legal limitations and preserves only those amendments that have been vetted in previous code adoption cycles. The 2025 building code has adopted the California Wildland Urban Interface, which affects a large number of residents that previously did not reside in any fire zone. In June of this year, the Fire Department adopted the California Fire Hazard Severity Zone map, which in effect expands the local fire zones. All structures located within the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone will now be required to comply with Part 7, the California Wildland Urban Interface, and Part 9, the California Fire Code. Any work to be completed at these addresses will need to comply, even if the work proposed is exempt from requiring a building permit. In previous years, the Very High Hazard Severity Zone included two separate areas, approximately 2,800 homes were affected by these building code requirements. As shown in the map, the hillside area spanned across the city's northern section from Scott Road and Bel Air Drive north and along its eastern and western borders. The Rancho area spanned across Warner Boulevard between Bob Hope Drive and Olive Avenue and encompassed Warner Brothers Studio and a small section of residential. In June of this year, council adopted the CalFire 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone, which expands the fire zone to, and an approximate 9,000 homes are now affected by these new zones. That's an approximate 321% increase. The Fire Hazard Severity Zone now incorporates three separate zones: a very high fire zone shown in red, a high fire zone shown in orange, and a moderate fire zone shown in yellow. The hillside area has been expanded upon and now falls further south, reaching to Kenneth Street and in some parts as far south as Glen Oaks. The Rancho area has also been expanded upon and now falls south of Alameda and reaching from the- and reaching from the city's southwest border to Buena Vista Street. In addition, a new area has been included and is just south of Mountain View Park along Riverside Drive. At this point, I would like to call up Fire Battalion Chief James Moy to discuss the Fire Department's Wildland Urban Interface brush clearing requirements.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members, city staff, members of the public. Uh, my name's Jim Moy, Fire Marshal for Burbank Fire Department. And uh, tonight, I'd like to highlight uh some of the significant changes for this code adoption process for the Fire Department. Um, first is the addition of five separate items um that we would like to add. Um, one of the items is uh the elimination of metal cutting blades. Uh, metal cutting blades and rock strikes throwing sparks into the brush is a common cause for wildland fires uh throughout California. So the elimination of metal cutting blades uh with brush clearance equipment will reduce that. Uh, second is no brush clearance should occur on red flag days. Uh, red flag days are issued by the National Weather Service. They're hotter, drier, and windier days, and probability of ignition for a wildland fire on those days is much higher. So no brush clearance should occur on those days. Um, the next item that is going to be added is uh when you're doing brush clearance, it should be the only activity that you're going to focus on and work on. You shouldn't be doing other activities or tasks until the brush clearance is done. So the sole activity should be brush clearance, and that'll be the focus. Uh, next is having an extinguisher or a charged hose line within 10 feet of the brush clearance project. Uh, in case there is a spark or a start of a wildland fire, uh it could be easily extinguished. And the last item to be added would be having a cell phone capable of calling 911. Um, so that a quick response could be uh initiated if if there is a possibility of a uh wildland fire. Um, so the addition of these five items would inherently make the community safer uh when people are doing their brush clearance uh activities in the summertime. Um, the other item that is a significant change is our Fire Hazard Reduction Program Guidelines and Requirements. Right now, they they sit and they live in the Fire Code. With the addition of this new Wildland Urban Interface Codebook, um, we would like to take intact all of our requirements for a Fire Hazard Reduction Program and put them in that new codebook. That's a more appropriate place for for those requirements to live. And then with that, I give it back to Mr. Friesland.
Um, additional changes in the building code uh typically include exterior wall and fire protection. Um, currently, if an exterior wall uh is fire-rated, the protection now is required to be continuous. This requirement will need additional stronger, more carefully designed fireproofing details, which could lead to additional costs during the design and construction phase. Um, building, in buildings with mixed use, uh shops below apartments, office buildings above, it is now allowed to put assembly areas that can hold over 300 people above the three-hour separation. What this means is mixed use could now have a larger event space or a larger performance area than what they've had in the past. Um, there are some new pool safety features. Um, specifically, they're taking what used to be individual features and now grouping them together. Uh, case in point, um, in the past, a pool cover and a pool alarm were considered two safety features. Now they're going to be considered one. Um, changes to the California Energy Code. The residential energy regulations continue to keep getting stronger and stronger, specifically for single-family homes. Senate Bill 32 aims to reduce emissions to 40% below 1990 levels by the year 2030. Executive Order S dash 3 dash 05 aims to cut long-term goals to 80% below 1990 levels by the year 2050. New buildings with public entrances in an an assembly, a business, an education, an institutional or mercantile occupancy are now required to have an enclosed entrance area, also known as vestibule. If this area has heating and and cooling, it will require its own thermostat in order to provide a set temperature in that space. This will add to additional square footage, as well as construction cost and energy controls. So that's going to be something that the public's going to be a little leery on. Uh, new construction, new commercial buildings uh will will have to include um solar PV systems and battery energy storage systems. The only exceptions are small projects with areas with insufficient solar access roof areas. New commercial kitchen kitchens must now be electric-ready. This means that if you're building a new commercial kitchen, it can be gas, but you will have to have electric-ready capabilities so that in the future, if a new tenant comes in and they want to switch over to all-electric, the infrastructure's already there. Um, and finally, multifamily buildings, hotels, motels, must now provide both short-term and long-term bike parking so that both guests and residents um have the ability to store their their bikes. So in conclusion, the 2025 California Building Code will go into effect January 1st, 2026. Burbank's proposed local amendments for this code cycle have been carefully reviewed to ensure consistency with the legal limitations of AB 130 um and preserves only those amendments from previous code-adopted uh cycles. Building and Safety Division and the Fire Department is currently asking for council's approval to adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code, the California Wildland Urban Interface, the City of Burbank's local amendments, and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code. For further information, please refer to CDD Building and Safety website. If residents have further questions, they can reach out to our general information email or myself, Russell Friesland, at the email addresses shown above on the screen. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation for the 2025 California Building Triannual Code Adoption.
Thank you for the presentation. And now that we've concluded the presentation, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. There being no public comment, I now move on to our council questions. Do city councilors have any questions? Councilwoman Rosati made like direct eye contact, ready to go.
I wasn't like burning a hole through. Uh, my question is for Mr. Moy. Um, so obviously, this has really affected my neighborhood, as you know. Um, I've been getting, I can't walk my dog without just people questioning. So the questions I get the most is, can we push back on our neighborhood being severe high-fire zone? We don't, now we don't have any brush at all. So how is it that we were designated this area with this designation?
Um, that goes back to the presentation I gave earlier this year uh regarding CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE's maps, and their introduction statewide of those maps. Um, every jurisdiction has to accept what CAL FIRE publishes as very high, high, and uh moderate severity zones. The Fire Hazard Severity Zones, they have to be by law established by CAL FIRE, and we have to accept them as they are. Uh, the only thing we can do as a local jurisdiction is we can make them more strict or extend, but we cannot reduce those those severity zones.
And in your opinion, is this area that I'm talking about, because it's not like the hillside where it's adjacent to a hill or on a hill? In your opinion, is this area can, do you think that's a high-fire zone area?
In my opinion, the potential is there, and that is why those maps are developed. Um, CAL FIRE goes through a strict uh process to develop these maps through their FRAP program, their Fire Resource Assessment Program. Um, they use fire behavior analysts and computer modeling to generate these maps throughout the state. And if you look on our Burbank Fire website and you just look at the map of Burbank, it might not make sense, you know, seeing these severity zones there. But if you look at the CAL FIRE website and the interactive map, and you look at California in totality, if you can imagine a campaign fire um running through different hillsides, and I've been in the fire service for 35 years. I was on a hotshot crew for six years, and I've been on thousands of brush fires. And these campaign fires, you can see them develop in your neighborhood that you're speaking of, you know? So across uh the LA River, in the Griffith Park area, um, with predominant winds.
Winds, yeah. So that's kind of been, my pushback has been the hillside across the Wash, the Forest Lawn Hills, the Hollywood Hills. If that caught fire, and we did have the wind in combination, it could blow embers over.
Absolutely. Yeah. And those maps are made with ember cast and ember zones in mind. So i- if you go back to uh one of the most extreme examples that I can think of in the uh recent future or recent past is um the fire that occurred in Camarillo early in the year. Um, it it, the fire started out in the flatlands on farmland. It got into the elevated winds with the east winds, and it spotted five miles away. So from flat farmland to the top of a hillside, five miles away, and then they lost hundreds of homes in that in that neighborhood. So um, the ember cast and ember zones, it is a real thing, especially with the predominant Santa Ana winds in this area. So that is the reason for.
And and the people, why now? And is it just technology? It's what we learned from recent events? Because the the hillside hasn't changed, you know, the Hollywood Hills, it's been there for.
It it's the fire service getting a little better.
Better.
A little more aggressive um with the data that we've uh acquired over years. You can go back to the Bel Air Fire of 1961 and and how many homes were lost in the Bel Air Fire over by UCLA back then, and we did nothing about it back then.
Yeah.
It took CAL FIRE another 10 years to even develop fire hazard severity zones.
Yeah.
And then 10 years after that was the Oakland Hills Fire, where um LRA land started uh with the Fire Hazard Severity Zones. So progressively, we're we're just getting better and more aggressive as a fire service.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate, I know you've been been getting pounded with calls and emails about this issue, so I just want to say thank you for your constant meeting with the residents and trying to to answer their questions.
You're very welcome, and we're willing to meet with anybody anytime and answer any questions.
Thank you for the line of questioning, Councilwoman Rosati, and thank you for the responses. I have a follow-up based on that. So I I know I get those questions too in that area because it's it's so unique and it feels like far away. With the brush being cleared, and I guess my question is, is it just due to the ember winds? Or is it also the brush that's there? And and if there were like any improvements to that area, could we see changes in the next map iteration that comes down from CAL FIRE? Or does that generally not happen?
No, there could be changes with CAL FIRE, and I believe uh just my opinion that CAL FIRE is going to be a little more aggressive and a little more responsive and making changes to these maps and other requirements. Um, they're under a lot of pressure to reduce the number of homes being lost throughout California. Um, so I that's, that's going to be the direction of CAL FIRE in 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 my opinion. Um, so yeah.
Thank you for that. I know folks may not want to hear that at home, but um it is important because we have seen what happens in in these devastating fires and how quickly it happens. So thank you for that. Um, any other questions? Um, I'll go Councilwoman Mullins, and then I'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, my question is relating to the actual development. Um, what I heard you say in regards to new new development buildings. I think I heard, I wrote it down, Part 7 and Part 9 of the code. I know, it was, sorry, she. Um, I I don't know what Part 7, Part 9 exactly says. And the additional restriction that we're putting on these buildings, um, one is to make sure it is equipped to be electrified, you know, so instead of gas, somebody buys it, they can go in and do it. Uh, additional requirements that we're putting on those development, the additional costs will be incurred. I'm I'm assuming there is an additional cost. Does that slows down some of the development? Does that put a hinder on the development because we don't have these existing requirements now? So it's it's a big question with a lot of different parts in it.
Perfectly fine. So first of all, let me kind of break it down. So Part 7 is the Wired Wildland Urban Interface Fire Requirements, and Part 9 is the California Fire Code. So tho- the Fire Code has always been part of the building code. This year in particular, the Wildland Urban Interface was added to the other components of the the uh the building code. Um, going back to your question about the electrification, so what I was specifically talking about with the electrification is for commercial kitchens. Um, I believe two or three years ago, there was a push internally in the city to work to and electrify basically everything. Um, we've since taken a step back on that. The last code cycle put in stipulations for residential that if you have a gas outlet in your kitchen, in your laundry room, by your HVAC unit, or by your water heater, you also have to have the infrastructure for electric. So that's been in place for the past three years. Um, this new part of the code is basically asking to do the same thing on a commercial kitchen. So there will be additional costs for that. You're not actually putting in all of the electrified wiring and everything. You're putting in the infrastructure. So you're making sure your your electric panel has capability of more electrical service to be put in. You have a conduit run from the electric panel to all of the the units, and then you have the space to put in a electric plug at a future date. So what you're paying for today is basically the infrastructure.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, what is, if you could explain to me, what is the wild land? What what does that mean? I I I understand the Fire Code a little bit, but what is wildland?
Let me uh refer to the Fire Department for that. The Wildland Urban Interface Codebook that was developed is basically going to encompass the Fire Hazard Severity Zones that are established by CAL FIRE. So that book is specifically for that Wildland Urban Interface.
And that's what Councilmember Rosati, I I mean, different zones, fire zones, and the severity of moderate or low or high. I'm I'm just trying to grasp.
That is part of it, yes.
Okay. Um, I I'm not going to be perfect at the code, but these things kind of prompt some questions in my mind to um the additional costs that will be incurred by the developers that, from my understanding, this was supposed to be, uh, especially with the AB 130, I believe, was supposed to be kind of transitioning easy development and making sure that they're not having anything incurred additional costs or also um, there's changes in the middle in between, you know, once they take a permit and when we update the code. So it sound like there is additional cost that's going to be incurred because there's additional requirements. And if I'm saying it wrong, please let me know, because I'm happy to be told you're wrong.
No, there there is a lot of crossover. Um, a lot of that Wildland Urban Interface Code has to do with building, which is more in in their lane. Um, but in that Wildland Urban Interface Code, there is also uh brush clearance requirements, which is more in the Fire Department uh lane, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a few follow-up questions for the brush clearing as well. Sorry to do sit-and-stand game there. Um, so first of all, thank you for including this in this um in these updates. This is a, okay, as you mentioned, it is a hazard that um could potentially. This is a, okay, as you mentioned, it is a hazard that, um, could potentially cause fires, so thank you for including it. Um, my question is that, um, in the high-fire zones, the brush clearing requirements, is it just for residential, um, buildings or is it for all of them?
It's for everything.
Everything.
It's for residential, commercial, vacant lots, it's everything within those zones.
Great, okay, good. And it also, that includes all the zones, including the moderate zones, correct?
Right now, because Burbank is LRA, and if, if I go back in, if California is broken up into three specific pieces of, uh, uh, responsibility area. FRA, which is Federal Responsibility Area, SRA, which is State, and LRA, Burbank is a one-hundred percent LRA. And right now, within LRA land, we're only required to do brush clearance within the very high-fire hazard severity zone, not in the high or the moderate. Whereas if you're in LA County and SRA land, um, you're required in all three of those zones right now.
Okay. And in the change of the maps follow-up question, um, the whole zoning grew, but the very high fire zones also grew specifically, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, then, so that, the question I have for that is that there are a number of folks who are now in that zone. Um, and also, this is a new set of brush clearing requirements, so we'll, what's the plan for the outreach to, um, educate folks of this new requirement? And then especially the folks who are now in that high-fire zone who never have been before?
So every year in the spring, we send out mailers to everybody that's in, in those zones. Um, now we've gone from approximately three thousand to nine thousand. Um, so we'll send out nine thousand mailers, uh, to highlight these new changes. Um, we'll also be posting it on our, our, uh, new website, and we also push it out on our social media platforms, and we'll also post it in, in public places.
Okay, great. And, um, when do these new, uh, requirements go into effect for the brush clearing specifically?
It'll be January twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so some time to get folks up to speed. And once it is in effect, will there maybe be drive-arounds just to kind of spot-check to see if people are, you know, out there brush-clearing and to, if they are, to educate them? Is that also possible?
Well, our inspectors go out and they inspect the entire, uh, fire hazard severity zones every single year, so we'll be out there, yes.
Great, wonderful, thank you. All right, those are my questions. Do you have a follow-up question, Councilmember Rosati?
And then those homes get a, the clearance or some kind of document saying that you'd adhere to the proper clearance?
Correct. Uh, the inspectors will go out, they'll perform the inspection, you'll either get a notice saying that, uh, your inspection results are that you passed, or you'll get a correction notice with a little note saying, uh, what the inspector saw and what they expect to have, uh, to be corrected so that you come, uh, in compliance with the code.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? No? Okay. All right, thank you so much for the presentation and for answering our questions. So council deliberation, comments, and if anyone would like to make a motion? Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance of the Council of the City of Burbank adopting by reference the twenty twenty-five California Building Standard Code, California Wildland Urban Interface, City of Burbank Local Amendment, and the twenty twenty-four International Property Maintenance Code, together with certain amendments addition and deletions. There, too, an amending portion of Title Nine of the Burbank Municipal Code, and it's found in Attachment One. Uh, two, adoption of a resolution of the City Council for City of Burbank making express finding and determinations that modification to the twenty twenty-five California Building Standard Code are reasonably necessary because of local climatic ge-geology? Is that how you say it?
Geological?
Geological?
Geological, I think.
Yes, okay, that word. And environmental condition as attachment two.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, perfect timing, Madam Mayor. We're going to go for a vote.
All right, let's call the vote.
Noting the absence of Councilmember Anthony, Councilmember Mullins.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. I literally heard when you started reading it, and that's when I was like, I gotta come back in. That was the entire time it took me to go to the bathroom and come back in. Thank you all for the report. All right. We will now move on to council comments. We will hear, uh, comments including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first, I'll have a few.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi.
I have a few, and I'm still, I have mine out, I think they're still looking for theirs. Okay. Um, by the way, we're ten minutes ahead on schedule, so awesome, woo!
How is that possible?
I know, it's awesome.
The Dodgers won, too.
Oh, wow. All right, so on October first, um, I attended, in, early in the morning, the Thomas Edison Elementary's Bike Walk and Roll to School Day, and I brought my bike and had a good time with probably about a hundred, more than a hundred kids participating and their families. It was super fun. Uh, Councilmember Rosati was there as well, we did that together. And then later on that day, I attended another, um, episode of my, um, Data Driven City program that I'm attending. Let's see, on the sixth, I attended the San Fernando Valley COG Board Meeting in Santa Clarita, and from the eighth to the tenth, I was at CalCity's Annual Conference in Long Beach. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tagahashi. I'll actually go next because I, I have very little to. On Thursday, October second, I attended the Affordable Housing Subcommittee with Vice Mayor. Um, on Saturday, October fourth, I was at the Burbank Athletics Walk of Fame along with Councilmember Anthony and our state senator, Caroline Menhofer was there. Uh, the three new inductees are really great. Uh, two of them have young kids still in, in sports, and it was great to see them supporting, uh, their, their, uh, dads up there, so that was really nice. Um, and they gave me advice on when it comes time to enroll my little one. All right, and then I also attended the California Federation of Business and Professional Women's Public Policy Conference, and they honored me by asking me to be their keynote speaker. Yeah. And then on Wednesday, October eighth, I attended the Board of Library trustee meeting. On Saturday, October eleventh, I attended FSA's Imagine the City event. It was really great at the Warner Brothers New Sen-, uh, Second Century Center. And then that is my entire week. All right, who would like to go next? Councilwoman Rosati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also attended the, October first, the Thomas E-Edison Elementary Bike Walk and Roll School Event with Vice Mayor, and I brought a bag of swag, and it went fast. It went like fasts. They like swag. So, um, on Tuesday, October seventh, I went to the Burbank Police Department, pink police cruiser and motorcycle unveiling, and the motorcycle was very cool. I wanted to take it for a spin, but they said no. Um, I do have a motor, I have a motorcycle license. On Wednesday, October eighth, I, uh, through, October tenth, I went to the CalCity's Annual Conference. Uh, great conference, learned a lot, uh, met a lot of, I'm actually following several council members and picking up tips on Instagram, so, uh, they had no problem giving me their Instagram, uh, account numbers, so. Uh, on Saturday, October eleventh, I went to the FSA Imagine, uh, City Party, and, um, the Frank Gehry, um, complex is just absolutely gor-, I hadn't been there before. The landscaping and the, the areas for the, for the, uh, employees to, to roam and gather and meditate, I mean, it's just absolutely gorgeous. Um, so I, I re-, I really enjoyed the location and the event. And then, um, Monday, October thirteenth, I attended the Planning Commission Meeting. Um, not too much came out of that. Um, yeah, not, not, not much came out of that, so, but thank you.
Thank you, and we definitely got to get you on a tour of that building, it's really cool.
It's super cool. And, uh, terrazzo floors with, uh, they have two, uh, commissaries, I mean, it's just, and just, if you look at the, if you just look at the, the structure itself and just all of the amenities, it's super nice.
Our city manager is looking at moving all of our offices over there shortly. All right, um, Councilwoman Mullins?
Thank you. Um, on October second, I met with Jamie Kizer from the Chamber, talk about, um, some of the work the Chamber's doing and a little bit about what's going on with the, uh, Film Commission. And I, too, attended the CalCity's Annual Conference. Again, like everybody said that was there, we had, um, really great experience and just, you know, networking with other council members, um, and finding out what other cities are doing is, is really an eye-opener for a lot of things that we do similar to other cities. Um, also, met with Anne, she's on the Police Commission, want to talk some more about today's meeting and, um, some of the responsibilities the Commission have, so we had a good conversation about moving forward and what, um, her role is on the Commission. So a lot of good work that she, uh, can definitely contribute to the Commission. And that was it.
Great, thank you all. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Does anybody have? I know you do.
You know I had my hands up. Okay, here we go. Um, so I, yeah, I'm not going to get into too much conversation because I'm going to get in trouble. Um, so, hey, thank you, waking up here for me.
I tried to warn you last time, I was like...
I know, I, I feel it from the side coming at me, I feel it. You don't need to warn me, believe me, I feel it. All right, so, um, I would like to ask for a staff report to come back in regards to SB seventy-nine, and, um, in the report, I would appreciate, um, specific, um, details, especially in regards to, um, the quarter-mile from BRT, uh, you know, the high-density buildings. Um, I also would like to see information regarding the cost of our housing element, the media district-specific plans in the Golden State, and the amount of, um, work that the staff has done on that, and what does that all entail with having SB seventy-nine in our city? I know it's a lot of information, uh, but as much detail as you can give us, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other agenda items? No? Okay, I have one. I want to agendize a report on directing staff to negotiating a community workforce agreement with the LAOC Building Trades. There being no additional agenda items, and I just want to double-check, Mr. City Manager, we don't have pending items that we need to talk about that ranking?
Uh, not tonight.
Not tonight?
Yeah, so, uh, these, uh, two that you just, uh, introduced, we'll, we'll bring them back, uh, next meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, so that being said, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, for a regular meeting in the Council Chamber, two seven five East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank. Stay dry out there in the rain, and happy Halloween season. Good night.